Good morning. Welcome to the land use meeting on October 11th, starting at 9:00 a.m. With that, I'll open up the meeting and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll do a roll call. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've asked for anyone that's able to stand to do so at this time, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions on a finite resource. I pray that you will guide us to make decisions that are not only in the best interest of for those of us that are here today, but for future generations as well. Father, I also pray for members of our armed forces and first responders, that you will guide them, keep them safe each and every day, and I continue to pray for all of those that have been impacted by this recent storm and for their continued healing. I ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I appreciate that. With that, we'll please do a roll call.
Overman?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
You have a call, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Just as a general announcement, we will be scheduling a special meeting Thursday at 5:00 p.m. to address the events associated with the referendum yesterday. So just to let people know that that's what we're looking to do once we have a ruling from the judge. Okay? Thank you very much. With that, I will ask Mr. Grady to bring to us the next item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. We do have a number of changes to the agenda, so I'll go now through the agenda and then I'll go through the published withdrawals and continuances beginning on page three of the agenda. The first change is on page seven of the agenda. It's item B3, Application RZPD 22-0559. Additional condition is being added that codifies the requirements for the submittal of the conservation easement over the area depicted on the site plan and committed to as being a conservation easement. Therefore, a condition is being added which provides for the provision of a conservation easement to the beneficiary of the Environmental Protection Commission, or EPC, with EPC as Secretary of Director designee having the authority to prove that CE language, and then requiring that such conservation easement shall be recorded prior to site construction plan approval. So that's being added, again, to basically codify the requirements for the conservation easement that was committed on the general site plan as part of that zoning approval. The next change in the agenda is on page 14, item F3, Resoning PD 22-0075. The applicant is requesting a remand of this application in December 12th, 2022 zoning hearing, master hearing. The next change is on page 14 of the agenda, item F4, Application Resoning PD 22-0685. The applicant is proposing a change to Condition 4. This ostensibly deals with improvements required on Crestwood Drive. The applicant is proposing an additional condition that they'll construct a five-foot sidewalk along one side of the Crestwood Drive from the project entrance to Pearson Road with an initial increment of development. Next change is on page 15, item F6, Application PD 22-0944. This change is regarding the list of proposed restrictions the applicant offered regarding uses they restrict from the Business Professional Office zoning district. One of the uses they propose to restrict was beekeeping. We're prohibited from regulating beekeeping per state statute which exempts the local authority governing beekeeping, so we're removing that as a restricted use given that exemption in state statute. The final change in the agenda is on page 12, item E4, Application PRS 22-1356. There's additional parties of record that were out of the backup post filing of the agenda. With those changes, I'll now go to the published withdrawals and continuances beginning on page three of the agenda. Item A1, Resoning PD 18-0996. Staff is requesting this item be continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A2, PRS Application 21-1153. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item A3, Resoning PD 22-0565. Staff is requesting the item be continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A4, PRS Application 22-0657. This application, out of order to be heard, has been continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A5, Resoning Standard 22-0802. Staff is requesting this item be continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A6, Special Use Application LE 22-0920. This application, out of order to be heard, has been continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A7, PRS Application 22-0937. This application is being continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A8, PRS Application 22-0940. This application is being continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A9, PRS Application 22-1006. This application, out of order to be heard, has been continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A10, PRS Application 22-1040. This application, out of order to be heard, has been continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A11, DRI 22-1081. This application has been withdrawn by staff. Item A12, PRS 22-1084. This application has been continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A13, PRS Application 22-1091. This application is continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A14, PRS 22-1266. This application, out of order to be heard, has been continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A15, PRS Application 22-1272. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item A16, PRS 22-1279. This application, out of order to be heard, has been continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A17, Public Hearing Vacating Petition 21-0014. This staff is requesting this item be continued in November 3rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. That concludes all changes, withdrawals, and continuances. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Move the changes?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Smith?
I just want to advise, I see that there's a couple of people who were here in person to speak to F3, and want to make sure that they're advised that that item has been continued.
Yes, we'll make sure they're advised. I'm aware that the applicant has also reached out to those, that they were able to contact before making the continuance request, but we'll make sure that those are there, are aware.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that. With that, we're at the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there's...
Still moved.
Second. Excellent. So we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We are approaching the agenda where there's an opportunity for folks to testify, so I'm going to ask that the oath be administered by the clerk's office.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Before we begin our first public hearing this morning, I'd like to take an opportunity to remind all the speakers, including those participating in person at Saunders Library, and those participating remotely, of our meeting participation process. When it's your turn to speak, I'll recognize you as a speaker. For those participating in person at Saunders Library, please adhere to our social distancing guidelines, remain seated, and please do not approach the podium until I have called on you. Thank you very much. With that, we are at the section addressing vacations. With that, Mr. Grady, you're recognized.
The next slide is agenda item C1. It's vacating petition by Maritza and Gary Pippin and the Westlake LLC to vacate portions of unimproved platted public right-of-way within Folio Number 79525.0400 at 2299 Roosevelt Street in Wamama. Carrie Allen with Real Estate Services will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Carrie Allen, Facilities Management and Real Estate Services Department. Item C1 today is vacate ID V220015. This is a petition by Maritza and Gary Pippin and Westlake LLC to vacate portions of unimproved platted public right-of-way within the plot of Davis and Valdell Addition to Town of Wamama and the plot of Halifax, both recorded in Plat Book 1, Page 136 of the public records of Hillsborough County. The petitioners have submitted this vacate request to replace the existing unimproved right-of-way with new and appropriately placed right-of-way, which will be developed and dedicated through the subdivision and plating process. The proposed vacate area is generally located north of Bishop Road, west of South County Road 579 in Wamama, and consists of approximately 25,014 square feet, or .574 acres. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of these portions of the right-of-way. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. I'm sorry. Did you have...
Is that a public hearing?
It's a public... Oh, that's right. Sorry. We're actually pulling it. So this is a public hearing. And anyone that was requested to speak, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item at the moment. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item as we are in a public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion.
Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Smith. With that, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Now we're back to a public hearing agenda regarding the E items. And with that, I will ask Development Services to provide a supplement on the next item.
Yes, again, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. The next petition is a petition number agenda item E1, PRS Application 22-0523. The applicant is Miranda Holmes. It's a request for a minor modification to a PD approximately 84 acres in size on the south side of Western Nice Griffin Road in east rural portion of the county. Commissioners, the request is to reduce the lots from 70 to 65, and as part of that, remove a requirement that provided for a maximum of 27 of the lots to be half-acre lots, and also to increase lot width from 90 to 100 feet, and also to modify the internal circulation and add cross-access points to the project. Staff is recommending approval. We basically noted that while they're removing that requirement for, you know, a small percentage of the lots to be half-acre, they did require other lots to be a mixture of one acre and two-third acre lots. Those other lots did allow for wetlands to be part of the lots. This revised plan provides for a design where all the lots have to maintain a minimum half-acre of uplands, and they're designing the project with retention in stormwater separate from lots, therefore that, and again, increasing lot width from our perspective increases compatibility with adjacent properties. And then, again, the changes to the internal circulation includes provision of additional cross-access points, which staff found favorable, therefore staff is recommending approval and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Is the applicant present to make a presentation?
Good morning, Commissioners. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. I think this is a fairly straightforward request. I would just reinforce a few items. This is an existing approved PD. We're asking to actually reduce the overall density down to 65 units, and the reason that we're doing that is this is a better plan than the one we are working with, both for my client and, I believe, for the community and the county. We have Todd Amadon of Landmark Engineering and Mike Yates of Palm Traffic to answer any technical questions you have, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are at the section where proponents or opponents are offered an opportunity to provide testimony. I do not see anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone there in the audience that wishes to speak as a proponent? Is there anyone there that would like to speak as an opponent? Hearing none, I will introduce or acknowledge Development Services.
No additional comments, ma'am.
No additional comments. Excellent. I assume that there's no rebuttal on this issue, so I'd like to open it up for a motion or consideration by the board.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
There was... Thank you. There was some public comment about flooding as well as gopher tortoises, and I just want to get on the record that if there are gopher tortoises on this site, the developer will need to do a wildlife survey and either preserve them or relocate them according to the laws and rules that govern that, and so our natural resources staff would inspect the site and determine if there were protected wildlife. Mr. Grady?
Yes, that's correct. There will be either wildlife survey and/or a site visit to determine whether there are in fact gopher tortoises and be required to either be preserved appropriately on-site or relocated in accordance with FWC requirements.
And as well, the stormwater handling management will be addressed at the stage of development.
Development. Yes, ma'am. The project will be required to construct a stormwater management system that complies with a stormwater technical manual, and that will provide for no post-development increase in discharge rate for the project, and that will be part of the review of the construction of the subdivision.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Grady?
The next slide is agenda item E2, PRS Application 22-0730. The applicant is Mark Bentley. Their request is for a minor modification to a PD located in northeast corner of Gunn Highway and North Hubert Road. This is a minor modification to modify the site plan, operating hours, and buffering and screening for an automated car wash. Commissioners, this was before you at the last BFCC meeting. It was continued to write the applicant, the applicant tuning to make some changes. Some changes have been made to this, and Michelle Heinrich, County staff, will provide a brief overview of those changes and staff's recommendation.
Good morning. Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. As stated, this application was continued from the previous BFCC land use meeting to allow for project changes and modified proposed conditions of approval. This request modifies PD 051102, which permits 7,500 square feet of CG, commercial general uses, with a certified site plan specifically for a convenience store, gas canopy, and accessory car wash. Under this PRS, the applicant proposes to utilize the site for a standalone car wash. PD variations were requested originally relating to buffering and screening along the north, which abuts residential property, and to the suburban scenic corridor. Also, initially, the project was proposed to not resemble residential structure as currently required. Staff was not supportive of the request, and at the last board meeting, the request was continued to allow for some refinement of the request. The applicant has modified the site layout, which will now comply with the 20-foot wide buffer with type-B screening adjacent to the residential, and that screening will include a six-foot-high wall. The project will comply with the suburban scenic corridor by providing a 15-foot-wide buffer yard along Gunn Highway, which will allow for tree plantings. Given the compliance, the layout is now demonstrating. Staff recommends approval subject to proposed conditions of approval. And also, I will note that I neglected to mention that the applicants have also removed the request to not have the car wash resemble a residential structure, so under this revised plan, it will resemble residential structure. And again, staff is now supportive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see the applicant's present. I recognize you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Bentley, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa, 33602. I represent the applicant. As Michelle indicated, at the September 13th board meeting, the board had raised certain questions and concerns primarily related to design and the request by the applicant to seek three variations from the land development code. As a result of the comments raised by the board, the client went back and redesigned the project, so the project is now in complete compliance with the land development code. No variations are sought, and as Michelle indicated, the design of the building shall be residential with a pitched roof. So just specifically, just to kind of walk through, there is a concern about the buffering on the north side. That now meets code and above beyond code. Some of the commissioners expressed a desire to have a masonry wall in lieu of a 10-foot PVC fence, and we committed to that, so it's going to be finished on both sides. And so that's the buffer to the residential area. The scenic corridor, we'll now just simply have all vegetation. What was proposed before was a reduction from 15 feet to 10 feet plus a sidewalk within the corridor, so now it's just going to have trees and vegetation. Hours of operation have been reduced relative to the existing approval. There was a car wash component, part of the existing project, and that had to cease operation at 10:00 p.m. The proposed hours of operation for this project are 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That's Monday through Saturday, and then 9:00 to 6:00 on Sunday. So being that we meet all requirements, the staff has found us compatible, and that we meet all land development code requirements as well, that we respectfully request the board approve this PRS. If you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer them. Thanks.
Thank you very much. This is the section where we address any proponent or opponent testimony. I do not have anyone that's signed up for this particular item unless there's someone in the audience that would indicate that they're interested in speaking as a proponent or a person that might be interested as an opponent.
No one in the audience.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll move to the section of Development Services, amended recommendations, if any.
No further comment. We would agree with the comments made, that the changes that were made to the plan have changed our position to be supportive of the project.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll open it up for discussion or a motion by the board.
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please take a roll call vote. I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith.
Thanks. And yeah, I'll be supporting the item. I just want to say, I think it's really important that they are now complying not only with the buffering and screening, but no longer seeking relief from the design standards of this community. And so that has gone a long way to changing my position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Thank you very much. Mr. Grady?
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E3. It's PRS Application 22-01008. The applicant is Linville Carewood SS JV 1 LLC. The request is for a minor modification to a PD located in the west side of North Dale Mayberry Highway, 400 feet north of the intersection of North Dale Mayberry Highway and Colby Road intersection. Ostensibly, the request, Commissioners, is to increase entitlements within this portion of the planned development located in the red on the aerial from 98,880 square feet to 103,639 square feet. Staff is supportive of it. You'll note there's an inconsistency finding in the file from Planning Commission that relates to concerning timing of EPC comments, and I'll defer to Planning Commission. They can explain further their inconsistency finding. The board has questions about that, but it is before you with the recommendation of approval from staff based on revised comments we did receive from EPC, where they are not objecting to this request and do not have any issues, concerns with the proposed site plan and requests as provided to the board today. We're available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Moreta, 401 North Astley Street.
Good morning, Mr. Moreta.
I can make a presentation. I'll keep the presentation brief. Subject site is located on the west side of Dale Mayberry. To the north is... Excuse me. To the north is Fletcher Avenue, to the south is Hudson Lane. The change area will comprise approximately two acres... Excuse me. Approximately two parcels totaling 4.47 acres. The development will occur on a vacant area of the site, which has been undeveloped. The existing approval in this area of the site, which was amended major modification 19-41462, includes a 3,700 square foot existing bank, which is located on the frontage along North Dale Mayberry. It also includes an existing self-storage entitlement, of which the total square footage has to be 10%. That entitlement now sits at 95,180 square feet. The FAR of the site is .75. The maximum height is 50 feet. The north and west setback are 20 feet. The east setback is 30, and the south setback is 10 feet. Moving to the proposed modification, proposed modification is to update the entitlement table for the mixed uses in the area relative to the self-storage. That area is approximately picking up 0.3 acres of upland, which were not previously identified in the earlier application. The modification will allow an increase in the total commercial development to go from 98,880 square feet to 103,639 square feet. The total net increase will be 4,759 square feet, or 4.6, which is allowed up to 5 point... Excuse me, 5% in a minor modification context. The self-storage will now be limited to 99,939 square feet. It will also include a 10% mixed-use retail component, which has to be part of that square footage. Again, the existing bank entitlement will remain. Moving to the aerial, you can see where the bank exists. The area of the site that will include the changes are south of the bank. The areas which include wetland to the north and to the west, those areas will remain untouched. There will be no wetland impacts. As part of the proposal, a condition is being added to the development to keep this trip generation, both in the AMPM peak and also the total trip generation, to the limits which were conditioned in the previous major modification 19-1462, so there will be no increase in any of the transportation impacts. Again, the wetlands will remain undisturbed. There's been some comments about the timing of EPC comments that have come back. There is no issue with the wetlands. We have nothing in our proposal which requests any type of encroachment into the wetlands. A condition will also be added to ensure there are sidewalks internal to the site. There'll be cross-access to the south of the site and maintain cross-access with a bank. There will be no change in the existing setbacks, no change to the height proposed, so the three-dimensional boundary, which is regulated by the setbacks in height, are not proposed to change, no change in traffic, so we believe that this site and this request will be consistent with the existing modification that was done in 19, and will continue to promote the integrity of the planned development. that was done in 19, and will continue to promote the integrity of the planned development. Your staff has recommended approval. We obviously agree with that, and we're available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have anyone that's signed up as an opponent or a proponent for this particular item, so I'll move to Development Services. For any recommendations?
Yeah, sorry. No additional comments? We're supportive of, I'm sorry.
Okay, just making sure I cover the bases here. Okay, no additional comments? And with that, we don't necessarily need an applicant rebuttal at this point. So I'll open it up for conversation with the board. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, this question is for Mr. Gormly. So Mr. Moreta has been representing this private applicant in this item through the whole process to the zoning hearing master and in working with county staff?
Well, Commissioner, this is a PRS, so it didn't go to the zoning hearing master.
Right, correct, correct.
It's my understanding, to my knowledge, Mr. Moreta became involved in this application very recently. To my knowledge, it was last week.
I was just wondering, you know, since he so recently left Development Services, how he is representing the private sector to our Development Services. I mean, we do have some prohibitions against certain people in positions lobbying the county for a period of a couple of years after they leave their job. And apparently, we don't have that for somebody who was just recently in a pretty high position in Development Services, but it's certainly food for thought.
Yeah. And Commissioner, that question was looked at. We did confer with the county attorney's office whether there was any issue with this, and what was determined is that the county ordinance, it applies to employees that started after Mr. Moreta started with Hillsborough County. So I believe the date is sometime in 1988 is where that starts, and his employee was prior to that date. Thank you for asking that question. That was vetted with the county attorney's office, and it was determined that there was no prohibition on representing this application.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining. What I'm hearing is a really tiny loophole that is open in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other further comments. Entertained a motion and a vote?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Grady?
Next item on the agenda, item E4, its PRS.
I'd like to alert the chair to my presence. Hello? I just wanted to alert the chair to my presence. It's Commissioner Kemp.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I did not see that you had joined the meeting. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, would you like to take a vote on the last item?
No, I don't want to take a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Again, the next item on the agenda, item E4, PRS application 22-1356. The applicant is Pity Drossi and Louis Drossi, LLLP. The request is for a minor modification to a planned development located 200 feet northwest of the intersection of Drossi Road and Crystal Lake Road intersection. The request is to remove from the list of permissible uses within the PD the use of an air curtain incinerator. So that, through this action, that use would be removed as allowable use and would be prevented in this PD going forward. Staff is recommending approval and is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll ask for the applicant's presentation.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Patricia Ortiz. My address is 2810 North Central Avenue, Tampa 33602, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant Peter and Louis Drossi, LLLP. I have been sworn in. As stated by Brian, this petition seeks to voluntarily rescind the air curtain incinerator use as allowed in condition of approval one of PD 98-0917, which was modified last year as major modification 21-0877, and most recently amended as PRS 22-0618. This development plan allows a village-style pattern with a maximum of 198 residential lots and limited AS1 uses. One of those allowed AS1 uses is an air curtain incinerator. Back in August, permits for this use were presented to the EPC, and in response to community opposition, that permit was shortly thereafter rescinded. To further demonstrate that this use will not be developed, we're here today of our own volition and at our own expense to voluntarily strike this use from the list of allowed uses. Your approval of this minor modification will further ensure that the air curtain incinerator use will not be developed, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you very much. With that, we've heard from the applicant. Do we have any proponents or opponents that have signed up to speak on this particular item? I do have one person that did sign up to speak in opposition of E4, and that was Michael Husky. If there are any others available?
There's a couple of people here to speak.
There are a couple of people. Okay, right. And so I'm going to first ask for testimony for a proponent, testimony? Are there any individuals that are here to speak that would like to speak as a proponent on this particular item?
No proponents.
Seeing none, do we have any individuals that would like to speak in addition to Michael Husky, who signed up to speak, that would like to speak as an opposition person? So I'm going to recognize Husky first, and then if there's anyone else in the audience, you'll need to come up and introduce yourself. And you have?
They're coming to the podium.
Okay. And the collective group of opponents have 15 minutes to offer testimony.
Thank you very much for hearing us today. And in looking at this minor modification...
Sir, can you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you please introduce yourself, please?
Sorry. My name is Michael Husky. I live at 18211 Griffith Road, approximately 1/8 of a mile from Mr. Drossi's property.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. It almost sounds like that I'm in objection to removing the air curtain incinerator from this application. Mr. Drossi has removed his application for permitting for the air curtain incinerator on the property. And in fact, he removed the application for permitting of two air curtain incinerators. The only problem our neighborhood had with that is on the application was listed it would be permanent air curtain incinerators instead of temporary like most developments would have. Nevertheless, I don't understand why he's going through all this trouble just to remove the verbiage of an air curtain incinerator when he simply has to remove his application for permit for Hillsborough County, and that resolves everything. I simply think that this minor modification of the zoning of the property is of no good to our community. When he removes this, he lists that he's removing this air curtain incinerator, almost acts like it's a, sounds like it's a good thing for our community, which it is. We were opposed to that. But I'm just opposed to the unknown portion of this modification, as what I can find is there's no reason at all for rezoning or remodification of this property. And the unknown portion of the modification is what I'm opposed to. It's my understanding that if you're going to rezone a parcel of property, you have to have a reason for that rezoning. And rezoning would be to either add something, adjust something, or anything. Simply removing the air curtain incinerator from the property is not a reason for rezoning of the property. I just think that there's an unknown angle that the Drossi family is projecting to our neighborhood, and I don't see it as being any benefit at all to our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other opponents that would like to offer testimony? And please introduce yourself.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Brian Flynn. I live at 2608 Wilson Circle. And like Mr. Husky mentioned, we are definitely in favor of not having the air curtain incinerator permanently on the property. But if you remember back when this first came before EPC as a permit, part of the conversation was the commercial nature of what was going on, and also the traffic that was going to be on our local residential roadways. Like I said, as we appreciate the fact that this air curtain incinerator is being removed, I don't feel that it goes far enough to limit some of the other uses that were causing concern in the first place. As you see here, it still allows for yard waste composting now instead of the air curtain incinerator, which would cause unsightly, you know, would still cause the traffic and cause potential for, you know, odors in the neighborhood as well. So I think that while we are proponents of the air curtain being removed, we also feel like, and let's avoid us coming back and having this conversation again and again and again. Let's put more teeth to this and come up with something that really reflects the neighborhood and keeps us in that realm. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other opponents that are in the audience that would wish to speak to this item?
No one further in the audience.
Thank you very much. We'll move to Development Services. Any amended recommendations based on what you heard?
No amended recommendations. I will say that the action of removing the use from a potential use, what that action would do is it would obviate any future opportunity for a new decision to be made about air curtain incinerator. And for that reason, we are supportive of this application, and we think that it does make a substantive difference in terms of what could potentially happen in the area.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, if the applicant needs to offer a rebuttal, there's time for that.
Yeah, again, Patricia Ortiz, for the record. As Mr. Gormly stated, the intent of this petition is to strike the air curtain incinerator use. That would take that use out of consideration for development on this property. So I think that kind of sums it up. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, if there are any.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, well, we'll open it up for board discussion. I'll recognize Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to keep my remarks brief. I'm sure we all recall this issue that we dealt with a couple of months ago, sitting as the EPC board, involving a request for two incinerators to be placed in a residential neighborhood. I'm not going to rehash everything that occurred, but I want to just say by approving this item, we are closing the chapter on a nightmare that this community faced. I do want to thank the neighborhood, again, for rallying to protect their community and quality of life. As I said at our last discussion, I've never seen a neighborhood mobilize like they did. I want to thank the board, again, for listening and supporting me and the neighborhood in this action. I also want to thank staff for getting this item done so quickly. And finally, I do want to thank the applicant for listening to the neighborhood and doing the right thing. By approving this item, the neighborhood can rest easy knowing incinerator would never be constructed in their community. Adam, one question that one gentleman mentioned, I think he used the term unknown portion. Essentially, I think what he was implying are any unintended consequences with this minor modification? I don't see anything, but you're the expert. I can't imagine there's any downside by us approving this. No, sir. I don't believe there's any downside. I don't believe that there's any unintended consequences with this change. This will simply take out of consideration something that could be considered today and does not add anything to the project or create any new opportunities that aren't already in place. We're fully supportive of this application. We believe that in terms of not having this use in the community, this will accomplish that, and it is a positive step for the community's standpoint. Okay. And then last comment regarding the one comment as far as adding more teeth into strengthening the application. Hey, I'm all for that, but I think the reality is, this is, the applicant is voluntarily withdrawing this item. So I think it's important to point that out. And with that, again, I want to thank everyone who worked hard on this, and just want to move approval.
Second. Two of the motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Myers. I, too, want to thank the community for coming out so robustly to bring it to our attention to help us understand what those issues were. And it's great to see a community that works on its own behalf and letting us know what we needed to pay attention to. So with that, we'll take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, we have gotten to the regular part of our agenda, a public hearing that's limited to the land use records. So with that, I'm going to recognize Mr. Grady.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item F1, rezoning position PD 20-1142. The applicant is Roberto Reyes Jr. The request is for a PD to rezone, parcel zone RSC 6 and AR to planned development located 700 feet southwest of South 70th Street and Chattling Road intersection. Michelle Heinrich with county staff will provide a brief overview of the request.
Good morning, Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. This application again is PD 20-1142, which seeks to rezone three parcels from RSC 6 and AR to PD to allow for a commercial operation that will consist of truck parking, equipment storage, landscape material and mold storage, firewood processing, a manager's office, and a security residence. Prior to the rezoning, the site received approval for a comprehensive plan amendment to the SMU 6 future land use category. The site is located in the greater Palm River area in the vicinity of zoning districts permitting open storage, industrial and manufacturing uses. However, property to the northeast and south is developed with residential. Therefore, impacts needed to be mitigated for to ensure compatibility. The applicant has proposed to provide a 30-foot wide buffer with type C screening along all perimeters, limit the project's access to one roadway which is located along the western boundary of the PD, limit storage piles to a maximum height of 40 feet, and provide hours of operation. Uses will be set back a minimum of 50 feet from the northeast residential properties. And to the south, the property will have a setback of over 200 feet due to an intervening five-acre open space tract located on the subject site. Staff recommends approval based on the project's layout, restrictions, and finding of consistency with a comprehensive plan. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. With that, we will open it up for oral arguments by proponents or opponents, parties of record. I do not have anyone signed up to speak to this at this point, but are there individuals there to offer testimony?
There's no one in the audience.
Okay. With that...
The applicant is here for a presentation, so we should hear from the applicant.
Okay, okay. My apologies. I missed that. Yes, the applicant has 10 minutes.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tumai of HTMI Inc. Address is 14031 North Dale Mayberry Highway, Tampa, Florida 33618. I'm here representing the applicant. As Ms. Heinrich stated, the applicant is requesting to rezone 14.53 acres to allow for a commercial operation consisting of truck parking, equipment and landscaping, open storage, firewood assembly, and a security and manager's office. The subject site is located 700 feet southwest of South 70th Street and Chatten Road intersection. Mr. Reyes is a small business owner, Hispanic small business owner, and he's requesting to rezone three parcels from RSC 6 and AR to PD. The main proposed access point is on South 66th Street, along with the proposed emergency access on South 70th Street. All the intended uses will be mitigated by a 30-foot wide buffer with a type C screening on all boundaries. on all boundaries. In addition, the applicant has agreed to amended hours of operation, which includes truck entering and exiting the site. Lastly, the TECO easement provides a large area of open space along the southern property boundary to mitigate impacts to the residential parcels to the south. We wholeheartedly believe the proposed petition demonstrates the compatibility with the development pattern along the portion of South 66th Street that intensifies west of the site with heavy and light industrial uses. We received more than 60 letters of support, which we have submitted to the record. The Planning Commission finds the petition consistent. Development Services finds the petition approvable with conditions. The zoning hearing master recommended approval. Therefore, we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Now we're opponent and proponent, and I still have no one signed up to speak and offer testimony that our party is of record. So with that, I'm assuming we do not need a rebuttal at this point?
Unless there's anyone in person at Saunders, if we could just make sure that no one's present to speak there.
There's no one present here at Saunders.
Excellent. Thank you for putting that on the record. And with that, assuming no rebuttal is necessary, I'll ask Planning Commission to do their presentation, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located within the suburban mixed-use six future land use category. The site is located in the urban service area and also within the limits of the Greater Palm River Community Plan. The SMU six future land use category has a maximum floor area ratio of .5 for light industrial uses. The maximum square footage that can be considered on this site is 315,810 square feet. The proposed intensity of 5,658 square feet on the subject site is well below what can be considered and thus meets the intent of Objective 8 and Policy 8.2 of the future land use element. The subject property is in a unique area that contains a mixture of residential and intensive non-residential future land use categories. The development pattern along this portion of 66th Street intensifies west of the site with heavy and light industrial uses. Single-family residential uses are scattered east, north, and south of the site. The applicant is mitigating impacts to the adjacent residential by providing buffering and screening per the Land Development Code. And additionally, the TECO easement provides a large area of open space along the southern boundary that helps to mitigate impacts to the residential to the south, which is consistent with policy direction in the future land use element with regard to neighborhood protection. When requesting non-residential uses, developments in the SMU six category must meet commercial locational criteria or request a waiver. Commercial locational criteria is based on the future land use category of the property and the classification of the intersection of roadways as shown on the adopted 2040 Highway Cost Affordable Long Range Transportation Map. In this instance, the closest qualifying intersection is at Madison Avenue and 78th, which is over the qualifying distance of 900 feet. The applicant has requested a waiver stating that the requested use is an infill project that is not requesting the full intensity and that the proposed uses are comparable to the uses that are west and north of the proposed site. Considerations involving land use compatibility, adequacy and availability of public services, environmental impacts, adopted level of service of affected roadways, and other policies of the comprehensive plan would carry more weight than the locational criteria and the approval of the potential commercial use. Because the project is located in an area that has the presence of heavy and light industrial uses within proximity, and considering the mitigation that the applicant has put in place, the request is compatible with the development pattern and therefore Planning Commission staff requests that the Board of County Commissioners approve the commercial locational criteria waiver. The site is also located within the urban service area where services and facilities are planned to be present to serve the community. The Greater Palm River Community Plan has this area designated as residential. However, in this particular area of Greater Palm River, infrastructure is not in place to serve a large residential development. Allowing the site to develop with a non-residential use rather than residential uses would help in the coordination of the timing of growth policies that are consistent with Policy 1.2 of the future land use element. The request is also in keeping with the surrounding development pattern, which is consistent with policy direction in Policy 16.3 of the future land use element. The proposed use also supports the vision of the Greater Palm River Community Plan, which promotes compatible infill development. And based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to conditions proposed by the Development Services Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll hear the zoning hearing master summary.
Thank you. The zoning hearing master considered the request for rezoning of approximately 14.53 acres from RSC 6 MH and AR to plan development to permit a commercial operation consisting of truck parking, equipment and landscaping, open storage, firewood production, and a security office residence. The subject property is currently developed with a landscaping business. The same owner-operator of the existing business will operate the proposed commercial business. No plan development variations or waivers are requested. As you've heard, the Planning Commission staff supports the requested waiver of commercial locational criteria and found the request to be compatible with the area and consistent with the comprehensive plan. The zoning hearing master concluded that the rezoning to plan development for the proposed commercial use is consistent with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan, as well as the Greater Palm River Community Plan, and recommended approval.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll open it up for board discussion and a consideration of a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
About motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Hagan. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Grady?
The next item is gentle item F2. The request is RZ PD 21-1321. The applicant is Juan C. Montesino. The request is to rezone from ASC 1 to a plan development for the purposes of allowing for open storage of commercial vehicles and trucks on the property. Staff is recommending approval. We found that this project was consistent with the, found this project consistent with the zoning and surrounding zoning development pattern, which consisted to the northwest and to the west of in zoning districts, which permits similar uses. The PD to the south and the CI zoning further south of the PD also permit, permits open storage, therefore, based on a development pattern. I will note that the applicant did also recently amend the comprehensive plan to SMU six plan category to allow for consideration of this use. And they're also providing along the eastern boundary adjacent to the existing residents to the east, a 30-foot buffer with a wall and landscaping consisting of 10-foot trees planted on 20 centers. Therefore, based on the surrounding development pattern and the buffering and screening staff does find this compatible with the area. You'll note the Planning Commission did find this inconsistent based on their evaluation of those same compatibility and transition issues, and the hearing officer did recommend approval. Stats available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will hear oral arguments. And with that, is the applicant present?
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Tu Mi for the record. The subject property is located on the south side of 24th Avenue South and 400 feet west of South 58th Street. The applicant is seeking to rezone from ASC 1 to PD. The parcel is 2.93 acres with a future land use of SMU six. His intent is to rezone to PD to allow for open storage, truck parking, and a 2,500-square feet building for his small trucking business. Back in January 13, 2021, in a rezoning pre-application meeting with Development Services and the Planning Commission, we discussed a proposal flex of future land use R9 and LI, just as the parcel directly south was approved back in 2010. However, the Planning Commission staff indicated that the flex option would not be supported, and a request to change the future land use was necessary to pursue a future PD rezoning for the intended uses. Therefore, as instructed by the Planning Commission, we filed for a comp plan amendment. That amendment, 21-09, was adopted December 9, 2021 through ordinance 21-43 to change the future land use from R9 to SMU six. Currently, to the north of the property, the future land uses R9 and LI. Current uses are vehicle salvage and storage. South of the subject site, the future land uses R9 and LI with current uses as commercial intensive uses under PD 10-0667. In the approved PD, the uses are for warehouse, showroom, assembly, office, open storage, and CI uses including garage, repair, storage vehicles, materials, and equipment. Two of the listed approved PD uses for the south parcel are the same proposed uses the applicant is proposing, which is for open storage and a building for an office use. East of the subject site, the future land uses R9 with current uses as single-family residence. And west of the subject site, the future land use is LI with current use as warehouse. This area over time has transitioned into more intense uses. The change of future land use to SMU six allows for the compatibility with the surrounding land uses in the area. The subject site is in the urban service area and adjacent to intense uses directly to the west. The subject site is in the Greater Palm River Community Plan, which supports the opportunity for business and growth, and job growth, as well as supports compatible infill and redevelopment. This proposed use would also provide for an appropriate transition between the industrial to the north and the residential to the east. Overall, the proposed use would be compatible to the surrounding development pattern to the north, south, and west. By approving this petition, it would be fair and just for the applicant since the Planning Commission and Development Services allowed for similar uses to the parcel south of the subject site back in 2010 under PD 10-0667. We received seven letters of support from the surrounding neighbors, specifically a letter of support signed by the applicant's neighbor to the east. We submitted that to the record. The zoning hearing master has recommended approval. Therefore, we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will hear any oral arguments by proponents or opponents. I have no one signed up to speak to this item. Are there anyone there in the audience that wish to speak that are parties of record?
No one in the audience.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Seeing that, we do not, I assume, need a rebuttal by the applicant, and we'll hear from the Planning Commission staff.
Thank you. For the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located within the suburban mixed-use six future land use category. The site is located in the urban service area and also within the limits of the Greater Palm River Community Plan. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to plan development to allow for open storage of truck parking and 2,500 square foot of an office and storage building. To the north of the site is heavy commercial and salvage yard with a large man-made body of water, and then single-family homes are located further north and then directly adjacent to the site to the east. There is vacant residential land to the south and southwest, and the property with open storage to the west. Although there are industrial uses to the west, the future land use map clearly delineates the location of the residential future land use classifications from the location of the industrial classifications. The proposed light industrial and open storage uses would not allow for a transition of uses that is sensitive to the character of this area and therefore does not meet the intent of future land use element Policy 1.4. A comprehensive plan map amendment to change the future land use map for the subject site from residential nine to suburban mixed-use six was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on December 9 of 2021. Planning Commission staff's recommendation for this comprehensive plan map amendment was inconsistent at the time based on compatibility concerns with the potential encroachment of more intensive uses that are allowable in the SMU six future land use category existing adjacent to the residential properties to the east. The future land use map clearly delineates the location of the residential future land use classifications from the locations of those industrial future land use categories. A landscape buffer and a six-foot fence has been proposed on the eastern boundary, and a six-foot fence is proposed on the northern boundary. While the applicant is attempting to provide screening from the adjacent residential uses, this will likely not mitigate for all adverse impacts such as noise, odor, and truck traffic. The proposed uses are not compatible with the surrounding residential development pattern and therefore do not satisfy the intent of the comprehensive plan's neighborhood protection policies. The proposed office and open storage use would not further the vision of the Greater Palm River Community Plan. The concept map in this community plan illustrates the subject site as being part of the residential area and makes a clear delineation of where industrial uses are intended and where residential uses are intended. The proposed use would intensify development within a well-established, single-family residential area, and additionally, the community plan supports well-designed compatible densities and intensities at appropriate locations. Allowing the proposed use is in this location would be in direct conflict with that vision. And based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development inconsistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll hear the county attorney regarding the zoning hearing master summary.
The zoning hearing master considered the request to rezone 2.93 acres from ASC 1 to plan development to permit a small trucking business on site with the open storage of trucks and a 2,500-square-foot building. Plan development variation is requested regarding the required 30-foot buffer and type C screening to the northwest and southern property boundaries. The applicant proposes to install a six-foot high fence along the northern property line and no buffering or screening along the western or southern boundaries. It was noted that the applicant will comply with the required buffering and screening along the eastern property line, which is adjacent to a residential home. The applicant justifies the variation by stating that the property to the west is zone manufacturing, and the 2,500-square-foot office will be located on the west side of the property to be in compliance with the required 20-foot building setback. The adjacent parcel to the south, which is zone plan development, is approved for commercial intensive land uses, and the applicant proposes to locate the project retention pond, which will extend the entire length of the southern property line. The PD variation met the zoning hearing master's approval for compliance with the Land Development Code, Section 5.03.06CB, as detailed in the findings of fact in the report. As you've heard, the Planning Commission staff does not support the rezoning request. The zoning hearing master concluded that the surrounding uses, including a truck, storage yard, manufacturing light industrial use, and vacant parcel, support finding of compatibility with regard to this requested plan development. And the zoning hearing master also noted letters of support in the record, which included a letter from the residential property owner to the east, which was filed into the record. The zoning hearing master found that the rezoning to PD for the small trucking business with open storage of trucks and 2,500-square-foot building on a 2.93-acre site is consistent with the existing and approved land uses in the area and with the SMU six future land use category. And therefore, the zoning hearing master recommended approval.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll open it up for board discussion and a motion. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thanks. I just have a quick question for the applicant. I'm asking about the letters. I see like, I don't know, four or five form letters of support in the record that were presumably all typed up by you and then signed with addresses by the residents in the neighborhood. Are you saying that one of these is that homeowner to the east? Would that be 5511 24th Avenue or the other one on 24th Avenue, 2309 24th Avenue?
Commissioner?
Is that a question to the applicant?
Yes, that's a question to the applicant. I'm curious about the assertion that the homeowner to the east has submitted a letter of support for this. So as I said, I see several.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, his name is Joe Madilla.
Yes, his name is Joe Madilla, Madilla. He's the property owner to the east.
He's one of these form letters. Oh, okay, I see--
Yes, Joe Madilla. Yes, ma'am.
And how did you collect these? Did you go door-to-door, or did you have a community meeting?
We went directly to the neighbors and spoke to them individually and told them of our request and asked for their support, and they signed.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll be supporting the item. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments or discussion? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Smith. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp? Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. As we heard earlier, F3 had requested a remand, so we'll move on to F4.
The next item is gen item F4, rezoning PD 22-0685. The applicant is HBWB Development Services LLC. The request is to rezone from ASC1 to plan development. The project is located on the west side of Little Road, approximately 530 feet north of Bloomingdale Avenue, the intersection of Bloomingdale Avenue and West and Little Road. The request is to rezone-- The request is to rezone for a 25-lot subdivision with a minimum lot size of 9,100 square feet with a minimum lot width for all lots of 70 feet, plus with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet along the southern project boundary. Primary access to the property is through Little Road to the east, but there's also access connection to Crestwood Drive on the west side of the project, as shown in the site plan. The northern half of the property contains a stormwater retention pond, which is the balance of the development lots around the south end of the property, as shown in the general site plan. Staff did find this approval subject to conditions. Planning Commission found it consistent in the hearing, also is recommending approval. Staffs available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present to offer oral argument?
Good morning, Commissioners Camie Corbett with the law firm of Hillward and Henderson, representing the applicant, which is Homes by West Bay and their Development Services arm. Next slide. And I have Ben Sworn. Next slide. This subject property is located in the Valrico area along Little Road. It's just north of Bloomingdale Avenue and south of Durant Road. Next slide. And this slide shows you the blue line on the right is the urban service boundary, and the purple outline is the subject property. So, the subject property is well within the urban service boundary. Next slide. And as Adam, I mean, sorry, as Brian just presented to you, we are requesting 25 single-family units with a minimum lot width of 70 feet. The minimum lot size is 9,100 square feet, and we are doing 10,000-square-feet lots along the southern boundary where we are directly abutting residential. We are providing a 10-foot landscaping and vertical screening area, which is over and above what would be required to buffer and screen from residential to residential. And we are providing a six-foot fence, which is a perimeter fence, all around the entire development, and we're doing a mix of PVC and wrought iron-style fence. The wrought iron-style fence will go along the stormwater pond, and that was specifically requested by members of the community who had concerns about drainage in the area. And then PVC will be on the southern portion where we're directly abutting residential. Next slide. We did have two community meetings. The first was in May. We presented our original plan, which was a request for 30 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 60 feet. That was about three units to the acre, as opposed to four, where this property is located in the residential four future land use category. So, that was the 75% minimum density requirement for that. At that meeting, we did hear concerns about that lot size and the overall density. There are extensive concerns about the Crestwood Drive connection, which of course is required by the connectivity policies in the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. There was concern about the traffic that that would cause, and then again, concerns about drainage and buffering and screening. When we initially submitted the plan, we didn't provide any buffering and screening on the northern portion because we were utilizing the stormwater pond as that buffer. We went back and had a meeting in July. We did increase the lot sizes to 70 feet, which reduced the density down to 25 units. We again talked about the connectivity to Crestwood Drive, and then again, the traffic, and again, the drainage. And then, we presented the buffering and screening that we planned to include in the plan. Next slide. And again, we made one more revision after that meeting, agreeing to the 10,000-square-foot lots along the southern boundary. That was something that was very important to those individuals who reside there, and we were able to accommodate that request. And our overall minimum lot size was increased to 9,100 square feet. Next slide. And with this slide, I'd like to ask our civil engineer, Todd Amadon, to come up and talk about drainage.
Good morning. Todd Amadon, Landmark Engineering, 8515 Palm River Road in Tampa. This slide is simply GIs exhibit on the left, demonstrating that the site is located in a volume-sensitive area for stormwater, and the slide on the right shows an above-average amount of retention pond that we have in order to meet that criteria. Briefly, a volume-sensitive criteria for stormwater means there's not a defined outfall, there's not a ditch or municipal canal or municipal drainage system to discharge into, so you have to hold that water and percolate it. So, the pond is a little bit larger than average, as shown on the right-hand side. Thank you.
You go to the next slide. There was, briefly, before I get to the key staff findings, there were concerns raised about habitat and species that might be present on the site. When we did our due diligence report, we didn't find any species, but those species studies are really best done at the time of site development, and your staff took those concerns into consideration and provided Condition 9, which specifically addresses protected species and what we have to do prior to development, the studies that we have to do, and the information we have to provide to the county. And we are comfortable with that condition and agreed to it. Again, key staff findings, staff finds it compatible and consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and their specific goals and policies contained therein. Development Services is recommending approval and found that it allows a gradual transition from larger lots to smaller lots, and that our enhanced buffering and screening limits the impact to the adjacent property owners. The zoning hearing master also recommended approval, and we are here this morning to respectfully request your approval as well. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and like, just reserve any time for rebuttal.
Thank you very much. There is, we're at a point where we're able to hear oral arguments by any proponents or opponents of record. Currently, I only have one individual that has signed up as an opponent. Are there any proponents that wish to offer any testimony before we move to the opposition?
No one in the audience for proponents.
Okay, great. For those that wish to speak in opposition to this item, F4, I only have one person signed up, Roxanne Back, who has signed up in person. Is Ms. Back available?
There's three people here in the audience wishing to speak.
Okay. I'll first recognize that which signed up to speak, assuming a party of record, and please approach the podium.
And Ms. Back, as you're just getting set up at the podium, I just wanted to ask you, as you come up and take your position, if you could just confirm that this PowerPoint is going to be the same material as was presented at the zoning hearing master?
Yes, it's the same material.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Back?
Good morning. My name is Dr. Roxanne Back, and I live at 4022 Crestwood Drive in Valrico. I'm here today speaking in opposition on behalf of my family, local residents, and the nearly 600 community members who have signed the no rezone petition. I'd also like to point out that many of us have joined together in a neighborhood group. We've met on a regular basis in strong opposition to this rezoning application. Several members of this group are here today in person. Some are joining us virtually, but it is unfortunate that the meeting time prevents a majority of the members from participating. The first thing I'd like to talk about is the Crestwood Drive connection to Little Road. There was very little to no investigation done on the impact of this connection. For example, the extra 10 peak-hour trips estimate was only based on the 25 homes within the planned development. But if you zoom out just a bit, you'll see that there is a major problem. This entire stretch of Bloomingdale is rated an F for both average daily peak-hour trips, average daily and peak-hour trips, and this is evident every day at the stop sign-controlled intersection with Pearson. Traffic gets backed up to the north, all the way past Crestwood, at least a half a mile to the west, and also to the east down towards Little Road. People avoid this connection whenever possible. By creating the public connection with Crestwood, it will serve as a relief valve, and traffic from the collector roads of Bloomingdale, Pearson, and Little Road will be rerouted through local residential streets. It will allow drivers originating outside of the development to use this as a shortcut, and none of this has been addressed. Let's take a closer look at Crestwood Drive. The Land Development Code clearly states that through traffic should be avoided as it increases the average speed and the likelihood of accidents. There are 20 families that live on Crestwood, and not a single one of us support this connection. We rely on Crestwood as a safe place to take our children, walk dogs, and ride bikes, but it is not suitable as a two-way thoroughfare. Our children walk this road to and from the bus stop. The county is responsible for increasing safe routes to school, not reducing them. Now, within the last 48 hours, West Bay has agreed to add a single sidewalk down Crestwood But there are many questions that need to be answered. Which side of the road will it be on? Will it satisfy the TS3 standards?
Excuse me, Ms. Back. I don't believe this portion is in your PowerPoint from the zoning hearing master, so you'll need to not show that on the Elmo.
They were able to add the addition of the sidewalk, and I don't get to respond.
With, you can certainly respond verbally, but as far as showing that, we can't have you showing the material that wasn't presented during the hearing master or put into the record prior to the hearing master hearing. That's just the process.
Well, I did talk about that there is no room on either side of Crestwood, and we don't know where a sidewalk would be placed. How are we going to handle the trees, the mailboxes, and the fences that will need to be moved, and who's going to pay for this? The community is going to be outraged if we have to pay to accommodate a development that we adamantly oppose. And I want to take a minute to look at this original design exception request. This was deemed approvable by the county with weak, at best, justifications and no supporting evidence. And if this was found approvable, we believe you should approve the next request. We, as a county, we, as a community, are requesting a variance to not make the connection, and I believe we have adequate justification. Making the connection conflicts with several of the other land development codes. The planned development does not require an additional access point. There's no precedent in the surrounding area. Within a one-mile radius, there are at least 25 one-entrance communities. And just quickly, this is another view from the other side of the property down Little This is what's being proposed. Northwood is a West Bay development with nearly identical lot sizes and style homes. You can see nine houses in this photo stacked on top of each other, and this is only one side of the road. From another perspective, the surrounding green lots are one or more acres each. The property outlined in yellow is about two and a half acres, and the little red squares represent the proposed lots at nearly a fifth of an acre. To further emphasize the disproportionate lot size, it would take half of all of those red squares to fill the yellow rectangle. The development does not reflect the character of the surrounding area, and the combination of the lot size and the Crestwood connection would radically alter the community and the quality of life. And I'd like to take a minute to talk about character and compatibility. Words like harmony and character are not defined in the Land Development Code. Compatibility is defined, but is not in a measurable, quantifiable way. You cannot measure or determine the character of a community, compatibility, or harmony on a spreadsheet. These are qualitative terms. They're subjective. So, who gets to decide? Who gets to decide the character of our neighborhood and what is compatible? The developer? That's ridiculous. They have no incentive to protect our community. They are motivated by profit, and at the end of the day, they get to walk away. On the other hand, we have a vested interest. The residents of the community, the people who live here every day, we create the character and we define the character of the community. We have to look at and live with the outcome of these decisions every day. We are the authority on what works here and what doesn't. So, it is insulting when Ms. Corbett dismisses the opinions of the neighbors and then touts a land use planner who is on their payroll as a superior unbiased authority. And despite a folder full of opposition letters, these concerns are not reflected in the county Ms. Corbett will also remind us that compatibility does not mean the same as. We know that, and I'm not asking for the development to be the same as two-and-a-half-acre lots. I'm asking to not have all these trees outlined in yellow to be removed and a row of five or more two-stairway homes stacked up along my fence line, peering down into my backyard with a measly 10-foot buffer. It's also ironic that West Bay claims to be the expert on compatibility when they continually change their definition of compatibility. Initially, it was 30 homes. Then, it was 25 homes, and this is not an isolated case. One more. If you look back to the 2016 Bridgewood Estates proposal, they started out saying 150 homes was compatible with the surrounding area on 25 acres. Then, it was 100. Then, it was 80. This took years, and it finally got down to less than 50 homes with a density of 1.6 units per acre. And this was because of the large surrounding lots. This rezone has even larger average lot sizes, and we are asking you to be consistent and at the very minimum, apply the same standards, which include a 20-foot buffer, a single entrance, and 1/3 acre minimum lots. We're asking for reasonable parameters to be set. And lastly, if the property is to be developed in an urban service area, there should be urban services. Policy 2.1 says the project is premature if there is a lack of transportation options. We don't even have sidewalks or bike lanes, and despite West Bay's claim that there is public transit, HRT clearly states they do not service our area. Our public facilities are deficient, our roads are overcapacity, and they flood from lack of stormwater management and drainage. And please don't tell us that there are plans for improvements, because we've been waiting for four years, and we still don't have a traffic circle at the north end of Little Road that was deemed an urgent project. There are multiple indicators that this project is premature, and I don't see any of this addressed in the county reports. In conclusion, the planned development is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. It's not compatible with the character of our neighborhood. We don't have the infrastructure. It will have negative impacts, and it will put the safety of our community and children at risk. We ask that you deny this proposal.
Thank you very much. With that, do we have any other proponents signed up to speak or present to speak? I mean, opponents, right?
Yes.
Opponents? There's only six seconds really left of the time, if I'm reading this correctly.
Why is there not a time clock here like there was in the last meeting? Why is there not a time clock here like there was in the last meeting?
Is there not one at Saunders? There is here in the boardroom. Is there not one there?
No.
Well, according to the time clock here that the clerk is taking records, there's six seconds remaining of, of opponent's time.
My name's Ron Smith. I live at 3305 Little Road. I live in the apex of it, of the Flag Shape property. My big thing is-
Okay, let's, to respect the question that you didn't have enough time, we're gonna, I'm gonna add 30 seconds to the time. Can I do that?
If you could just pause, I need to verify that Mr. Smith is a-
A opponent, a party of record, right. Understood. Mr. Smith, please hold on just one second so we can accommodate your testimony for 30 seconds.
Yes, he, he is.
He's a party of record. Mr. Smith, you may proceed. You have 30 seconds. Miss, Commissioner Myers?
In fairness, I'm Madam Chair. Let's give at least three minutes.
Your, your mic is not on, ma'am.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay, now it's on.
Okay, thank you. Let's at least give three minutes to the individual to speak.
Is that the sort of joint consensus of the motion?
My button won't work.
Okay.
I don't care how much time we give, but however much time we give, then we need to give the applicant.
Understood, understood. Okay, so let's go with three minutes, and then we would add three minutes to the applicant's time to respond in a rebuttal, correct? Okay. Everybody on point? Clerk, are you good?
And Madam Chair, I may have heard that there's a third audience member there in opposition as well, so they, the current, if that's the case, the current speaker may want to be mindful that that third person may want some of that three minutes.
Good point. Since I have not gotten a tally for previous sign up on opponents at this point, can I ask the staff at Saunders Library, how many other opponents are there that would like to speak to this matter?
The other person in the audience indicated they do not wish to speak, so I think the gentleman who's at the podium will be the last speaker.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That clears that up. And Mr. Smith, you're recognized for three minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. I reside at 3305 Little Road. I am in the apex of the Flag Shape property impacted by two sides. My biggest point is there are a pair of southeastern kestrels that nest in the barn that's set to be raised. We have date stamped pictures sent to the FWC and the Natural Resource Department. We just want to make sure that that's mitigated properly, as the county has set aside property for that in the past, and that driveway connection will take away. They need open pasture to hunt. They've been there for many years. I've been there for 27 years. Secondly, there's a bunch of flooding, and apparently what I presented in the last meeting, y'all don't have record of anymore because, but y'all can't find it, but that, there are pictures of the falcons, there are pictures of it next to it. The attorney couldn't find, their people didn't see the species. It's very important that a southeastern kestrel will only be seen during the middle of summer. In the wintertime, you can't identify it as a southeastern kestrel, which is the, the species found in Florida. Outside that time, like right now, it could be an American kestrel coming in from, out of, that is migrating down or, or north during those times. So when they did their, their original environmental survey of the property, you could see a kestrel and write it off as an American kestrel and not threatened anyways if you saw one. In the summertime is the only time you know. I'm a, again, I'm a 25-year licensed master falconer. I teach falconry, licensed by the state and the federal government, the U.S. Wildlife Service. So I'm, I'm pretty darn good at this. And the last thing is just the flooding on our street. We had videos. We just want to make sure they agree, they've agreed to take care of the flooding on Little Road. Our, my house and the adjacent house is constantly flooded out. And now they'll block off that water from going into the pasture, and it'll flood us out worse. Those are my two, my big points. I'm just disappointed that I couldn't really present properly, and y'all didn't have the stuff I presented last time in the hearing meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. There's 39 seconds left. There's anybody else? And not seeing anyone else coming to the podium, although I can't see at the podium. Yeah, now I can. We'll move on to the applicant rebuttal. Which you'll have eight minutes.
Thank you. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hill Ward Henderson, again, for the record. Just briefly on compatibility, if you don't want to defer to our planner that we hired, I would request that you defer to your planners. You have expert planners in the Planning Commission and expert planners at your Development Services team, and they have all reviewed this and have determined that this request is compatible and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We actually had to seek an, an exception to the comprehensive plan to allow us to go down to the 25 lots, because we are almost half of what would be permitted in the land use category. And with that, I'd like to ask Steve Henry to come up and address the transportation concerns that were raised.
Good morning. Steve Henry, Linkson Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa 33607. Real quick regarding the access to Crestview, Crestwood, when we originally submitted the application, we did not have access to Crestwood. We were requested by the staff in compliance with the code to add that access to Crestwood, which, which we did. We have also looked at the ability to build sidewalk on there, and based on our review of the roadway, we believe it is feasible to build a sidewalk. That sidewalk will be at the expense of the developer, and he has agreed to do that. So we will have to work around the trees and mailboxes, and we have to relocate those, what we have to do. But that will be at the expense of the developer to build that sidewalk. That concludes my presentation. If you've got any questions, thank you.
And also I'd like to speak briefly to the two other developments by Homes by West Bay that were referred to. Bridgewood Estates is directly to the north. Those lots are larger lots, but they are deep lots. They are 70 foot, 75 feet in width. And then the North Ridge lots that were shown as the, the same as this are actually 60-foot lots, and those are much smaller lots. Those are up on Durant Road. And I think if anything, what the changing lot sizes and the willingness to work with a neighbor reflects is that Homes by West Bay does intend to be a good neighbor, has been a good neighbor. And again, you saw, we had two separate community meetings before we even came to the hearing, and we have been in regular dialogue with the community, and we have made several modifications, including increasing the lot sizes in the overall development, increasing the lot sizes directly to the south. Those are the folks that are definitely going to see more house than anything else. The folks to the north are going to see more pond. And we have added the fencing and the landscaping buffering where none is required, and we accommodated the requests for the two different types of fencing. And we have done what we have been able to do to accommodate the requests by the neighborhood, and we would respectfully request your approval.
Okay, there's five, five minutes remaining. Is that correct? Okay. For any other applicant rebuttal at this point? But seeing no one at the podium.
I was just gonna say, we do have our team here, Todd Ammon and Civil Engineer, Steve Henry, Linkson Associates, and our planner, if anyone has any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the Planning Commission staff.
Thank you for the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located within the residential four future land use category. The site is located in the urban service area, and it is not located within the limits of a community plan. The residential four future land use category surrounds the site on all sides, and the intent of this category is to designate areas that are suitable for low-density residential development. The development pattern along Little Road and Bloomingdale Avenue consists predominantly of single-family residential dwellings and vacant residential properties. The proposed use is consistent with future land use element policy 1.4, which states that compatibility does not mean the same as. Rather, it refers to the sensitivity of development proposals and maintaining the character of existing development. Additionally, the proposed use is consistent with Objective 16 and its accompanying policies 16.1, 16.2, and 16.3, which seeks to protect existing neighborhoods and development by ensuring compatibility with the surrounding area through various buffering requirements and mitigation techniques. The proposed 25 single-family residential homes are allowed in the residential four future land use category. The subject property is in the urban service area, and the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent single-family residential lots that surround the proposed development in all directions. In addition, the applicant is proposing a 10-foot landscape buffer along the entire site boundary. With a 12.1-acre site, up to 48 dwelling units can be considered. The applicant is requesting 25 dwelling units, which is less than the 70%, I'm sorry, 75% of the allowable density of the land use category per policy 1.2 of the future land use element pertaining to minimum densities that are required in the urban service area. The applicant is requesting an exception to this minimum density requirement based on the criterion that developing at a density of 75% or greater would adversely impact the existing development pattern within 1,000-foot radius of the site. The applicant has stated that the area is predominantly single-family residential uses, and the proposed development is consistent with the character of the area. The applicant also states in their narrative that developing at four units per acre would not match the surrounding development pattern. The applicant is proposing lot widths of 70 feet and a minimum lot size of 9,100 square feet, with the southern parcel line lots at a minimum of 10,000 square feet. The surrounding development pattern for the area within 1,000 feet includes an average of just under one dwelling unit per acre. The proposed 25 units on a 12.1-acre site results in an average of two units per acre. Requiring the applicant to provide smaller lots to meet the minimum density of 36 units would not be compatible with the surrounding residential development pattern, which ranges from half acre to five acres in size. In addition, the proposed development would be a gradual transition from smaller lot, single-family projects adjacent to the north into the east, and the larger's lot, single-family properties to the south and the west. Based upon this, Planning Commission staff finds that requiring more units on site would not be compatible with the existing development pattern, and the proposed use meets the minimum density exception criteria stated under future land use element policy 1.3. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed planned development consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the conditions proposed by Development Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the county attorney's office regarding the zoning hearing master's recommendation summary.
The zoning hearing master considered the request for rezoning of approximately 12.1 acres from ASC1 to planned development, to develop a maximum of 25 single-family dwelling units. The applicant committed to additional landscaping over and above the land development code requirements. The zoning hearing master noted that the minimum lot size will be 9,100 square feet, with the exception of the lots along the southern boundary, which are required to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. The required minimum lot width for all lots is 70 feet. Planning Commission staff testified that the rezoning is compatible with the surrounding development pattern and is supportive of the request. The zoning hearing master noted that opposition testimony was presented during the ZHM hearing. Concerns were expressed regarding the proposed secondary access to Crestwood Drive to the west, drainage in the area, and kestrel falcons on the subject property. The county's transportation staff representative testified that the county transportation technical manual requires new subdivisions to connect to adjacent roadways such as Crestwood Drive. The applicant's representative submitted documents into the record regarding the reference neighboring subdivisions and stated that one subdivision predated the county's regulation, and the second subdivision provided the secondary access. The applicant's drainage engineer testified that the subject property's drainage system compensated for off-site drainage and would improve the overall drainage in the area. The applicant representative testified regarding kestrel falcons on site and stated that species are reviewed at this time of site development to ensure that current conditions, including nesting periods, are evaluated. The zoning hearing master found the rezoning to be consistent with the land development code and the comprehensive plan and recommended approval.
Thank you. All right. We are at a point where we can have board discussion and a motion to consider. I will recognize Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to make any sort of a motion at this time, because I see that Commissioner Smith is in the queue, and I want to hear what she has to say. I do want to get some questions and comments on the record, though. First, I'd like to see if Ms. Corbett can answer a question for me. One citizen spoke about the prospect of leaving some existing tree canopy in place versus removing it and replanting it, the area with the planned buffer. I don't know if you have anyone on your team that could tell us right now, is it possible to accommodate that?
I believe that the conditions of approval, and I've walked away from my staff report, I do believe there are, there is acknowledgement of existing trees from natural resources in a condition, and if I could take a look at that and see if maybe that might address it. Bear with me.
Sure. Ms. Corbett, what I'm gonna do is just move ahead to my remaining comments and just call you back up to the podium in a moment, after you've had a chance to look at that. So Commissioners, I know we're all about connectivity, and, you know, look, I know that the cul-de-sac roads and everything that we see as a legacy out in the suburbs has been a, an issue with respect to transportation and traffic flow. But I have this pulled up on a map, and if you look at Crestwood, if, if there's a connection, Crestwood can only connect Little Road to Pearson Road. If you look at the west, you have the Buckhorn subdivision. There may be one other subdivision sandwiched in there between Buckhorn. But if you, if you look to the west, you know, you have homes there, there's no right-of-way. It would be impossible to create any right-of-way. If you look to the east beyond Little Road, you have the same issues. You have an existing lotting pattern, and then the Twin Lakes subdivision not too far to the east. And I know this area very, very well. I just live a couple miles from the proposed site. And ditto about the traffic circle at Little Durant and Dover. That project was supposed to be finished by now. I don't know what's held it up. And the same holds true for the project just to the west, traffic circle at Durant and Miller. You know, I was told, it's not a funding issue either. These are funded projects. But I was told some time ago that they'd both be finished by now. But when you look at, at, you know, what folks are gonna be doing here as they leave this proposed development, they're gonna, by and large, want to head in a northerly direction and/or a westerly direction. They're gonna want to link up with Bloomingdale and head west, or they're gonna want to go north to link up with Highway 60. And, and if you look at this proposed Crestwood connection, I, I just think that a lot of folks would want to make that left onto Pearson to hook up with Bloomingdale. I think that would be problematic. I think the left onto Little to go north would be much easier, and then, of course, in the scenario where they want to link up with Bloomingdale, it would be a right-out, which would certainly be much easier. And when that traffic circle does go live, you know, it'll make for easier traffic flow for people that are wanting to go north. On the flip side, if they want to go north on Pearson, they're gonna hit a signalized intersection at Pearson, which ultimately becomes Mulrenan Road and Durant. And there are no turn lanes there, no turn lane infrastructure. There's only a left-hand arrow coming from one direction at that signal, so I think traffic would really back up. So I think when we talk about connectivity, right, in a scenario like this, we would want to get people moving easterly and westerly as far as possible, right, to take that pressure off Bloomingdale Avenue. That just wouldn't happen here. It would just be a road that would just connect Little to Pearson. It would give the, the development a front door and a back door, essentially. And I just don't see where that back door option is, is really feasible here in this case. So if it, if, if this is approved today, you know, I'd like to ask that, that we not require the connection to Crestwood. But Ms. Corbett, if you're ready, I'd like to ask about that existing tree canopy that the citizen spoke of.
Yes, Commissioner, I was able to look at the staff conditions. Natural Resources included a specific condition, number eight, which indicates that there are a number of significant trees on the site, including potential grand oaks, and that's, that's all, that's the entire site. It says every effort must be of- It says every effort must be made to avoid the removal and design the site around these trees. The site plan may be modified from the certified plan to avoid tree removal.
Okay. That's good to hear. I'd like to listen. Mr. Gormley?
Just also note that in condition 2.2, there is an allowance that existing vegetation may be used in lieu of required planting for trees. So there is some recognition that if the existing trees can meet the screening requirements, they can remain.
Okay. So I'm not prepared to make a motion because I want to hear what Commissioner Smith has to say, but, you know, for the record, I struggle with the requirement for the connection to Crestwood, and I would like to see the citizen that spoke about the tree canopy accommodated.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. And, you know, I appreciate the public weighing in and their concerns about their neighborhood and what this will do. I understand that this area of Bloomingdale and Little Road and Lithia Pine Crest is become a nightmare of traffic and a problem providing infrastructure for new development. And so, you know, I think it's good that we have, that we're able to be thoughtful about this and consider the citizens' comments. I appreciate the applicant having had two meetings in the neighborhood with the citizens and accommodating their concerns in the final application they're presenting to us today and Commissioner White's comments about making sure that any changes to the tree canopy are mitigated for. I really appreciate the gentleman who came in and informed us about the kestrels so carefully and accurately that we could make, you know, good accommodations about them. And I think handling the tree canopy will help in that area, but also want to assure them we do have Natural Resources staff that will be reviewing the wildlife at the development stage and ensuring that we do everything that the state laws allow us to do in protecting wildlife in our county. Having said that, I mean, this is in the urban service area. We are having 700,000 people move here in the next 30 years. The only way to protect us from the very, very costly damaging impacts of sprawl is to allow urban development to proceed. And in this case, the Conference of Plans says this site should have four per acre, and yet the developer has come in, listening to the neighborhood, trying to be compatible with half of that, essentially two per acre, 25 on about 12 lots. There's no way we can deny that, 25 houses on 12 acres in the urban service area or 25 houses on 12 acres. The lots are large-size lots at 10,000 square feet on the south and 70 foot wide. I think this meets the definition of compatibility in that neighborhood. But the traffic, you know, we, the citizen is right who said the plans for transit, the plan is a long way, long way, as we sit here today, from being realized. And I do hope we can speed up that traffic circle so, you know, we'll work on that by hook or by crook. But we are all going to have to get creative and make some painful choices when it comes to these decisions about where we're putting cars and traffic on roads that have no hope of being improved anytime soon. So I think, you know, bringing down the density to half is part of it, and Commissioner White, I hear you. I hear you. You know, we keep having this discussion about, all of us, a very thoughtful discussion about connectivity. And I hear what you're saying about the small impact of this connectivity, but I think we're really going to have to get serious about connecting the grid in areas where the local roads are already at capacity. We have to provide what that citizen called a relief valve. We have to provide connections for people to have options to get around some of the big traffic bottlenecks. And if it's only the neighborhood that will be utilizing this between Little and Pearson, all right, it's only 25 more houses that'll be using it, but we'll give them that. But if it's otherwise, I mean, I know it's hard. We keep having, nobody wants anybody driving through by their house, but they want to drive by everybody else's house, and they have to drive somewhere. They have to get to work and school and hospitals somehow. And the county's, our county's technical manual for transportation requires connecting the grid. It requires it. If we keep just tossing that out, we are not paying attention to our transportation experts and designers who are trying to help us with these tough decisions. It requires connecting the grid, and it requires it for a good reason. And so I'm going to move approval as it is with the understanding that the, you know, the trees and the wildlife will be looked at, and I'll move approval just as it is and see where that goes. Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Myers. I put myself in the queue before I saw that there were additional folks to speak, but I would like to echo what you're suggesting and to address many of the great comments that Commissioner White mentioned. I, too, was ready to kill this project without connectivity on Crestwood, but I'm also not willing to approve connectivity without improvements that provide safe route to the school nearby. The provisions that are made or the comments that were made regarding the design exception provision to make sure that that substandard road is brought to at least reasonable standard allows us to not approve a project where students, whether there's connectivity or not, are going to walk down Crestwood and then go up Pearson to get to that school. We have gotten emails from constituents that said, how in the world did you allow this to happen when you built this community and you didn't take into consideration that children will be living in that community and will be walking down a road that's not improved? That's just not okay. Yes, we can have a goal for connectivity, but we also have to have the requirement that that connectivity be at a standard that is considered safe. And I think we can do that by taking these kinds of adjustments. When we ask for that connectivity, that we also ask for that improvement. And with that, I'll recognize Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you, everybody, for such studied and intelligent comments. I don't have very much to say, except for I wanted to just emphasize something that was said earlier. We have a housing crisis in Hillsborough County, and we are constantly asked to make very difficult decisions here about where we are and are not going to allow for new residences to be built. And Commissioner Smith talked about trying to prevent sprawl by keeping the growth out of the rural service area. We also have the big question, and it's only been exacerbated by recent events, of what to do about development in the coastal high-hazard area. The more that we restrict where we're going to allow development, we also have to balance that with the places where we are going to encourage that additional density. And our staff, the opposition testimony, which was very well reasoned, I think failed to appreciate that our staff is following a comprehensive plan where these things, these constraints that we have have been considered. And so we have designated certain places where we're going to allow a certain amount of density, and in this case, they're actually under it. As Commissioner Smith pointed out, they have 70-foot lots, which are nice-sized lots, and it's a good compromise in a community that needs this additional connectivity. So, excuse me, this additional housing stock. So I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm just going to argue one final time that this connection to Crestwood would not create a grid. It'll never connect anywhere beyond Pearson and Little to the east and west. So with that being said, I would make a motion to amend and remove the requirement for connection to Crestwood.
We have a motion by Commissioner White. Second by Commissioner Hagan. Any discussion? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I just want to make sure to be clear that I won't be able to support the amendment, that I think with our financial constraints of what we're able to do, this is going, connectivity, even small pieces from here to there, to allow some people to cross without getting all the way to Bloomingdale and getting out on those bottleneck intersections, is going to be a critical tool in our toolbox for the foreseeable next few years. So I won't support the amendment. I hope we return to the original motion and have that connectivity.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm sorry to get into the queue one more time, but I completely agree with the rationale of, you know, if we have point A, let's get to point B for now, and then later we may have the opportunity to get to point C and point D and so on and so forth. If you look at this on a map, there will never, ever be a point C and a point D. It's just, it's landlocked. So, you know, I just, because of the traffic pattern issue that I mentioned, the issue with trying to make a left on to Pearson to hit Bloomingdale, the issue with the signal at Pearson and Durant versus the planned traffic circle at Little and Durant, I just, I think it's much, much better to just have the traffic flowing onto Little. And if you look at the residents that live on those large semi-rural lots on Crestwood, let's be honest, it's going to be low on the county's priority list to bring that road up to proper standards, to handle the new traffic, the kids trying to walk to school and that kind of thing. So I like to look at these things on a case-by-case basis, and in this particular case, I think it's best to just leave well enough alone.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Cohen?
Quick question of the applicant. If the Crestwood connection is not opened up, what's the fate of the sidewalk? Is the sidewalk still going to get built?
Right now, Commissioner Cohen, that is a separate standalone condition to build the sidewalk, and there is pedestrian connectivity allowed anywhere from the PD, so we would be willing to leave the sidewalk. Because the condition is, unlike typically, that standard might be in the design exception here, it's a standalone condition, and we would be willing to accept and leave that standalone condition to provide the sidewalk and a pedestrian connection.
And, Madam Chair, if I may answer directly to that, if Mr. Gormley and Ms. Lundgren recommend that I somehow change my motion to allow for pedestrian-only access onto Crestwood versus just a complete non-connection, I'd be comfortable with that.
I think that would be a good clarification to make, just for the record.
If I still have a second to the motion, then my motion would be to amend and have pedestrian-only access onto Crestwood. I'd be willing to accept emergency access as well, emergency vehicular access only and pedestrian access only.
Okay, so you've amended the motion to include those two provisions. I'm just going to comment, I'm still wrestling with this idea. We still need connectivity. And I do see the conditions do talk about requiring to pave substandard portions of Crestwood Drive to 20 feet, consistent with the design exception, that would be that the developer will construct a five-foot-wide sidewalk along with one side of Crestwood Drive from the project entrance to Pearson Road with the initial increment of, with the initial increment of the development. I'm going to ask for some straight English here, just to make sure I'm clear what that means. So does that mean that Crestwood, at the developer's expense, would resurface Crestwood with a sidewalk from the development to Pearson to allow for non-substandard road and sidewalk pedestrian access from the development to what technically is the school up the street on Pearson?
So Commissioner, the condition has two parts, as it's been proposed amend today. The design exception would require, and the requirement would require, the widening of Crestwood Road to 20 feet in width. I believe that some portions of Crestwood are already at 20 feet, so it would be widening the rest of the road to 20 feet. The condition with the sidewalk is a subset of that design exception condition as proposed that could remain. However the board vote goes on the full vehicular connection, the sidewalk connection could remain if there was no vehicular. As proposed, it would be widening Crestwood to 20 feet, ensuring that from the project to Pearson, it's at least 20 feet of pavement and a sidewalk on one side of the road. That's the condition that's recommended today with the additional language that was provided on the addendum.
Okay, so I'm going to propose a question to the applicant, if possible. If what I thought this design exception means is that Crestwood would be resurfaced, basically, and with a sidewalk in order to meet that standard agreement, that 20-foot-wide two-lane, I would assume, does 20-foot also require marking separation of each of the lanes? I'm not sure what the standard is.
I don't believe it's required on a local road, you mean, like the yellow line?
Yeah.
I don't believe that that's required on a local road such as Crestwood.
Is it possible to get an opinion on that from our design engineers that would require to set the standard on what the improvement would be?
There is no requirement for the marking on local roads, just confirmed.
On local roads?
Yes.
Even though it's 20 feet wide?
Yes.
Or 10-foot lanes?
10-foot lanes, yes.
Is that the plan? We definitely need to work on our design, okay? And that's a separate issue, but we definitely need to work on our design. Could the applicant comment on their understanding of the improvement that they've agreed to in this design exception?
Yes, this is Steve Henry again. And what I've put up is a graphic that's included in the design exception. So the easternmost portion of Crestwood Drive narrows down there. It's about 160 feet. That easternmost 160 feet narrows down to about 17 or 15 feet on the far eastern portion. So what we would do is improve the road from where it is 20 feet today to the eastern boundary to connect to the project. And then again, as we said, we would then build the sidewalk along the one side of the roadway, once we determine, we get survey of where that would be. But that's the improvement that we're doing to Crestwood, is that only that easternmost section is not. section is not the 20 feet.
Okay, so you would just be resurfacing that which is not 20 feet?
We would be widening it and then resurfacing that portion of it. Yes, correct.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any additional striping that could be requested if you were to resurface the entire area for uniformity between the housing development and Pearson? Is that correct?
Correct. We would not be resurfacing that portion west of the improvement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Quickly, just to be clear, I'm glad to see the emergency access and pedestrian access provided should this amendment pass, but I'm hoping it doesn't. Thank you.
With that, are there any other comments regarding the motion? Amended motion as well, so. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to two. Chair Overman and Commissioner Smith voted no.
Okay, thank you very much. With that... Pardon me? Okay, okay.
Do we have to do the motion? I think we just did the amendment.
We did the amendment, okay. So, we'll entertain the motion?
Overman?
No.
Cohen?
Wait, wait.
This is to pass, the motion to pass. We just...
We have passed it. We're on the main motion. As amended.
Motion as amended, without the connection.
Without the connection.
Okay, yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Myers?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Kemp?
Can you hear me? I just, I had my audio disconnect right when the other vote was taken. So, I just wanna know, did that fail? Two to five?
No, it passed, that, the amendment passed. We, if we'll have the motion restated so that Commissioner Kemp can catch up a little bit, that would probably be very helpful for her vote. The original motion was?
The original motion was to pass as is, and then it was amended on a five-to-two vote with no connection. So, that's what we're voting on now.
Four to two.
Four to two, sorry, without your vote, Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you.
Okay, and the clerk has what votes recorded so far?
For the main motion, I have Chair Overman as no, and Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Hagan as yes for the motion.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Chair Overman voted no.
Thank you very much.
And, Madam Chair, may I have a point of personal privilege related to the item that we just voted on?
Certainly.
Yeah, I just want to say to staff, let's, you know, let's do our due diligence in attempting to document these kestrels that I've heard about. And if we do indeed document that they are there, utilizing the site, let's make this a model. Let's, let's work with the developer, and let's make this a model as to how wildlife and development can coexist. I think it's, it's great that they're possibly on the site. I do wholeheartedly believe that there's a way that they can coexist. I know there's a planned retention area. I believe that kestrels prefer upland habitats, but, but that doesn't mean that maybe some creative things can't be done along the perimeter of the proposed retention area. But I really think we can have a success story here and make this a model as to how we can have them coexist and preserve wildlife and promote infill development at the same time.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Okay, we're done with that item. Next, Mr. Grady.
The next item is the N item F5, major mod application 22-0863. The app is Craig Stern. The request is for a major modification to existing planned development that's located at 5241 Lithia Springs Road. The request is for a major modification to existing PD to modify a development option that provides for a mini warehouse facility with accessory boat and RV storage. The app is requesting to expand that area, boat and RV storage. Israel Monsanto with county staff will provide a brief overview of the requested changes to the PD.
Good morning. Israel Monsanto Development Services. Commissioners, the site today is developed with 99,000 square feet of mini warehouse building and 19,100 square feet of outdoor areas for the storage of RVs and boats. This is option number three under the current approval of the PD. An area along Lithia Pine Crest Road is vacant, and that is reserved for 11,000 square feet of building space for commercial neighborhood uses as a future development space for development option number three. The area to store RVs and boats is 20% of the developed square footage for the enclosed portion of the project, and this is meeting the requirement of the Land Development Code Section 61160 for mini warehouses. As part of this major modification, the applicant requests a new development option on number four, to increase the storage area for RVs and boats, and also to add the storage of moving trucks, limited to four. These trucks would not be, will be stored internally, enclosed and screened by existing buildings. The new expansion area for the RV and boats will be placed along the east at the front of Lithia Pine Crest, and that's the yellow area that you see on the aerial. It would not be internal to the project and would not be enclosed or screened by buildings. With this development option number four, the applicant proposes to replace the area of the 11,000 square feet of commercial space approved today with the expansion area for the storage of the RVs and boats. This storage space will be accessory to the principal mini warehouse use. Maximum building space for the proposed development will remain at 99,000 square feet as approved today. Since the site already has designated outdoor storage RVs and boats for no more than 20% of the enclosed space of the facility per code, a waiver is being requested to allow an increase of the outdoor storage area above the 20%. A second waiver from the Code 61160 is also being requested to eliminate the requirement that the designated area for the expansion of the outdoor storage shall be internal to the project and enclosed or screened by buildings. Commissioners, this site had requested a minor modification last year to expand the outside stores of RVs and boats to be over the maximum 20% of enclosed space, similar to this rezoning, and that PRS was 210840. It was heard by the, by the, by your board in December 2021. Planning Commission did not find that request consistent. The current future land use of RES2 does not allow open storage. That request proposed a wall screening along Lithia Pine Crest Road, which provided the height, design and look of buildings similar to the existing structures with architectural features, roof lines and materials to address compatibility of the outdoor storage areas. That proposal addressed many of the compatibility concerns with the surroundings and would have effectively screened those areas from public view. However, staff could not support that application citing that the 20% maximum outdoor storage area is set by the code to ensure that open, open storage remains accessory to the principal use, which is the mini warehouse. This request was denied by the board. Although the site was recently denied, as noted, the applicant this time proposes conditions on site design standards similar to another mini warehouse use or proposal PD that have recently received approval by this board, in which the outside stores of RVs and boats increase to be beyond the maximum approved or required 20%. Therefore, it waived section of the Code from 61160 for the location of the outdoor storage and also for the internal location of these open stores, also waiving another section of 61160. So, those open stores will not be enclosed or screened by existing buildings. That PD, 211092, was approved in February of this year and consists of 54,000 square feet of self-storage facility. This PD is allowed to have areas to store the RVs and boats that are more than 20% of the approved enclosed space. The outdoor space is limited to the storage of boats and vehicles only. As noted, the board approved the waivers from the Land Development Code for the outdoor storage to be allowed to be placed along the road, not internal to the site, and also not to be enclosed or screened by buildings. The applicant states that this request is to increase the area for boats and RV parking, which will be enclosed with a similar eight-foot fence for a length of approximately 375 feet as requested and approved by the other PD rezoning. In these situations, there are not adjacent residential zoning compared to the other requests, so there are no concerns with compatibility, according to the applicant. Lithia Pine Crest Road is also a designated suburban scenic corridor, which requires 15 feet of buffer and trees, and this project will also comply with this requirement. The applicant proposes to increase the buffer to 20 feet and also add an eight-foot-high fence with additional screening required by the scenic corridor, which will provide a greater number of trees. The outdoor parking and storage area will be covered as well for all the boats and RVs. Staff finds that this major modification proposal is similar in nature to the recently approved self-storage project mentioned before. Both applications requested an increase of the outdoor storage area above 20% maximum per the code. Both outdoor storage areas are not being enclosed or screened by buildings, but rather by eight-foot-high opaque fences. The scenic corridor landscaping along the road is also being proposed, along with a 15-foot-wide buffer required by the scenic corridor provision of the code. The applicant, however, is proposing to increase this buffer area along Lithia Pine Crest to 20 feet, and existing vegetation will be preserved in lieu of the required landscaping to increase the screening by natural means. The applicant is also limiting the outdoor storage to 50% of the approved enclosed space as part of the proposed conditions, whereas the other rezoning approved by this board did not offer a specific maximum outdoor storage area. The moving truck storage will be placed internally and enclosed by existing buildings. The applicant also proposes to limit that number to four moving trucks. Furthermore, the applicant is proposing to restrict the moving store, the moving trucks to a storage only, and the lease of moving, of the moving trucks is not contemplated to be open, to be open to the public. Outdoor areas along Lithia Pine Crest will be covered by canopies, and solar panels are also proposed by this major modification, and similar to the other proposal, removing this requirement will require a major modification. The immediate area consists today of a mix of commercial, residential and agricultural uses with water treatment plants adjacent to the south, extensive wetlands screens the site from adjacent residential uses to the west. Commercial and office uses are located along Lithia Pine Crest Road further to the, to the south, and a fence company currently operates across the road to the east. The proposed outdoor expansion is located to the east of the site, along the roadway, away from residential lots west and northwest of this site. Staff finds that the proposed storage expansion of the existing self-storage facility would not pose a compatibility concern. The area of the expansion today is approved for 11,000 square feet of commercial uses along Lithia Pine Crest Road. The applicant is proposing conditions to this site with similar conditions and restrictions approved by the other application approved earlier this year by the board. Planning Commission has submitted an inconsistency finding, similar to the same inconsistency found for the previous denial on the PRS last year. We have received no objection for transportation or the APC, and therefore, based on this consideration, Development Services staff recommends approval of this request with the restrictions and conditions. And we are available if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll open up to the applicant to make their oral arguments.
Commissioners, good morning again. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard. Just briefly to add some context to what Mr. Monsanto presented, we were here last year with a similar but not identical request for open storage for vehicles. We had at that time a very aggressive and detailed screening plan, which Development Services actually supported, I believe. And in the end, I believe this board found that plan to be actually too aggressive. Our wall was a bit too high, the whole thing was just a bit too much. Subsequently, about a month later, this board approved a very similar request, very close fact set, very similar. We shamelessly copied the elements of that case, worked with Development Services, and even got through the zoning hearing master with a recommendation of approval based on that. So, here we are this morning, hopefully with a much more detailed and approvable case. I'm gonna let Isabel Albert with half walk you through the specifics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Isabel Albert with half, 1,000 North Ashley Drive. I have a presentation for you, please. Thank you. Next. So, just to reorient yourself and little remember where we are, this is a 15-acre site. It's located on Lithia Spring Road and Lithia Pine Crest Road. It is currently a planned development approved for three options. The first one is to, the mini storage with a commercial use up front. The second is a mixed use of residential, office and commercial, and the third option is for residential development. It is also located in the urban service area, and it does have a future land use of residential too. Next, please. So, more specifically, this is the surrounding area. What we have to the south of us is a very large Lithia water treatment facility. To the north, we have a planned development approved for daycare, and to the east of us, we have open storage, single-family units, and to the west, we have some single-family units. And then, next, please. Take you out a bit more further out, it's really to show you that predominantly, the surrounding area is a non-residential development. We have treatment facility, the schools, the commercial and ELAP land. And this is important to show you for compatibility issues. Next, please. So, this is a proposal. We would like to convert the commercial area up front to a converted boat and RV area. This would allow for an increase of the 20% to the 50%. And as Billy explained, it is going to be screened similarly to the previous model case that we were looking at, that we are increasing the buffer to the 20 feet, but we are providing that eight-foot fence. And along Lithia Pine Crest, we have additional landscaping due to the corridor landscaping requirements. And furthermore, we also would like to add the four moving trucks located internally to our site. And like the other case, we would provide some solar panel. Next, please. And so, again, this brings us to the future land use. The future land use, the intent of it is to have a suburban level of neighborhood or commercial office. And then, this is serving the non-urban areas that are permitted, but this is in the urban area. Boat and RV is going to be accessory to the mini storage, and that is important because the boat and RV storage is not going to be existing without the mini storage. However, the mini storage can exist without the boat and RV storage. So, that is why the boat and RV area is accessory to the mini storage, mini warehouse. It is not considered an open storage as defined in the Land Development Code. The Land Development Code specifically excludes boats and RV. This is not an open storage use as defined in the Land Development Code. It is an accessory use to the mini warehouse. And also, the mini boat and RV or mini storage is considered commercial general. It is not a commercial intensive use. Next, please. Next, please. So, this brings us to staff recommendation. Development Services looked at the request and found it consistent with the design, in terms of designs with the rest of the existing development. The proposed screening meets the intent of the LDC for the outdoor mini storage screening, and they do agree that it is an accessory to the mini warehouse. It is also, as they found, it is not an open storage use, it is an accessory use to the mini warehouse. Planning Commission, on the other hand, found it inconsistent due to the increase in the boat and, and storage area. They found the use inconsistent or incompatible with the surrounding development, which I previously showed you that the majority of the development surrounding us is non-residential. We have a huge facility to the south of us for the water treatment plant. We have open storage across the street. We have commercial use along the roadway. We have planned development for, for non-residential use, and we have ELAP property. And they felt that they could not support the open storage use in a residential two category. However, this is not an open storage use, this is an accessory. I previously showed you that the majority of the development surrounding us is non-residential. We have a huge facility to the south of us for the water treatment plant. We have open storage across the street. We have commercial use along the roadway. We have a planned development for non-residential use, and we have ELAP property. And they felt that they could not support the open storage use in a residential two category. However, this is not an open storage use. This is an accessory use. And as we see, we have an open storage across the street from us versus our accessory boat and RV parking as found on the left of the screen. Next. What's important also is we do have a lot of letters of support from the community, including from the school, the school, adjacent schools, other businesses in the area that uses this storage and has submitted letters of support for that. It is going to be decreasing the traffic from existing approval of the 11,000 square foot of commercial use. This is being a thoughtful enhanced design for the request to be compatible with the surrounding area. It is at a neighborhood scale, serving the neighborhood. Conditions of approval will assure the proper site design as is intended, and the quest is consistent with the Land Development Code and with the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan as it is not a CI use. And we did also request a variance and minister of variance for the Lithia Spring Roads that is currently, that's already been developed and approved, but we had to reapply for it. And it was approvable by the county. With that, we're looking for, hoping for approval, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. With that, can we hear any oral arguments offered by proponents or opponent of parties of record? I don't have anyone signed up at this time.
There's no one in the audience that's on this.
Hearing none. We'll, I'm assuming the rebuttal isn't necessary by the applicant, and we'll move on to the Planning Commission staff.
Thank you, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. For the record, the subject property is located within the residential two future land use category. The site is located in the urban service area and located within the limits of the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. The subject property does not meet commercial locational criteria as outlined under Objective 22 in the future land use element. A waiver request has been submitted for review. Per Objective 8, future land use categories outline the maximum level of intensity or density and a range of permitted land uses allowable per each future land use category. Appendix A of the future land use element contains a description of the character and intent permitted in each of those categories.
If there's anyone online, they need to actually mute their phones, please.
May I continue?
I think yes. Go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you. The residential two future land use category surrounds the site on the north, south, and west sides, and to the east are the agricultural rural 1 to 5 and natural preservation future land use categories. As the language in the description for the residential two future land use category states, only neighborhood commercial uses are allowable in the residential two future land use category. The definition for neighborhood commercial uses in the definition section of the Comprehensive Plan states that intensive commercial uses, so uses that are allowed within the commercial intensive zoning district, shall not be considered neighborhood serving. The applicant is asking to waive the Land Development Code requirement that outdoor storage shall not exceed 20% of the developed square footage of the enclosed mini warehouse use. Outdoor storage is a commercial intensive use or CI use that is not permitted in residential two. Therefore, the requested modification is not consistent with development expected in the residential two future land use category. The proposed rezoning does not meet the intent of Future Land Use Element Policy 1.4 with respect to compatibility with the surrounding area. Outdoor storage is a CI use, and the applicant is proposing this use for the site with adjacent residential uses to the north, and CI uses were not originally approved beyond an accessory use for the original plan development. The request does not meet the definition of accessory storage according to the Land Development Code, and the applicant has thus requested two waivers. The subject site does not meet the intent of Objective 9 in Policies 9.1 and 9.2, which require that all development be compliant with local, state, and federal land development standards. The applicant contends that the outdoor storage component will be accessory to the mini storage warehouse use, and the applicant is also asking for relief from two LDC requirements. The first is a waiver to allow the total square footage of the designated outdoor storage to exceed 20% of the developed square footage of the enclosed portion of the mini warehouse facility. The applicant is also asking for a waiver to eliminate the requirement that the designated outdoor storage area be internal to the project and enclosed by buildings. While the mini warehouse is considered a commercial general or CG use, going over the 20% threshold limit for an accessory use makes the outdoor storage, which will be utilized for RV and boat parking and the storage of moving trucks, a secondary use of commercial intensive. For the future land use element, CI uses are not allowed in residential plan categories, and the proposed development is inconsistent with Objective 9 and its policies. The proposal does not meet the intent of the neighborhood protection policies of the future land use element that require development in residential areas be limited to a neighborhood scale, and outdoor storage is a commercial intensive use that is noted for its intensity and scale. The increase in outdoor storage to the south also encroaches on a development pattern that is predominantly residential, agricultural, and public institutional. The request also does not meet Future Land Use Element Policy 16.2 that requires a gradual transition in uses between unlike land uses and the integration of surrounding land uses. Despite the proposed mitigation measure of additional screening, the proposal to waive the 20% threshold would allow for commercial intensive uses, which undermines the future land use element as they are not allowed in the residential two future land use category. As a recent PRS application was submitted for this site asking for a fourth development option of an increase in outdoor storage to 32,000 square feet and a placement of a 13-foot wall. This request was also, the request also was a waiver to the Land Development Code to allow more than 20% of the developed square footage of the enclosed portions of the warehouse facility. Planning Commission staff at the time found this request inconsistent based on compatibility concerns and being inconsistent with the residential two future land use category. This proposed development, Major Modification 22-0863, is asking for the same fourth option of an increase in outdoor storage, which is a CI use, to 50%, which is higher than the intensity of the previous PRS application, which was found inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan by the Board of County Commissioners. Lastly, Future Land Use Element Policy 22.7 notes that commercial locational criteria is not the only factor to take into consideration when granting approval of an application. Although the applicant claims the outdoor storage component of the development should be considered accessory to the mini warehouse use, it is above the 20% threshold for an accessory outdoor storage use. The impact of such a use is beyond the realized intensity of the site, notwithstanding the interpretation of its accessory nature. The use must be compatible with the surrounding existing residential and agricultural development, and placing a commercial intensive use such as outdoor storage in a residential plan category that does not allow for commercial intensive uses undermines the intent of the commercial locational criteria requirements in the Comprehensive Plan as well as the residential two future land use category. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed modification inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll hear from the zoning hearing master's summary.
The zoning hearing master considered the application for a major modification to Plan Development 16-913, which is currently approved for three development options. Property is designated as residential two by the Comprehensive Plan and is developed with a 99,000-square-foot mini warehouse facility and includes the accessory storage of RVs and boats. The major modification request proposes to add a fourth development option, Option Four, which would allow a maximum of 99,000 square feet of self-storage mini warehouse, including accessory RV boat storage and accessory office and manager's residence, and up to four moving trucks. The zoning hearing master noted that a previous personal appearance, application for the subject property to expand the outside storage of RVs and boats over the maximum 20% was denied by the Board of County Commissioners in December of 2021. The application was not supported by the Development Services Department due to concerns that the Land Development Code maximum of 20% ensures that the storage use remain accessory to the principal use of the mini warehouse. The Planning Commission at that time, the staff did not support that request on the basis that residential two future land use category does not permit open storage. The zoning hearing master found that the plan development waivers and PD variations that are being proposed in this application are in harmony with the Land Development Code, and specifically with regard to the Land Development Code provision, which limits the percentage of enclosed mini warehouse square footage for the accessory storage of RVs and boats that normally would serve to ensure that the storage use would not become the primary use of the parcel. The proposal of increase of that percentage over 20%, but less than 51% will continue to ensure that that accessory storage is not the primary land use. The zoning hearing master concluded that the proposed modification to increase the percentage of the accessory storage of RVs and boats with the related conditions is consistent with the existing use of the property, and the applicant's proposed increase in fence height and buffering and the landscaping plan proposed by the applicant will all serve to meet the intent of the LDC requirement for the use to be screened from view from adjacent parcels. The zoning hearing master concluded that the major modification as proposed is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code, and the zoning hearing master therefore recommended approval.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll open up for board discussion and consider a motion. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Myers. Not seeing any other comment, please take a roll call vote. Come in. Yes. Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Kim? Commissioner Hagan is on the line. He may need to unmute. Commissioner Hagan?
Yes, for commu, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Kim? Commissioner Kim? Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Grady?
The next slide is Agenda Item F6. It's rezoning standard 22-0944, the applicant's PFARH Lutz Office LLC. The request is a rezoning from AS1 to business professional office with restrictions. The property is 6.93 acres and is located in northeast corner of US 41 and Newberger Road. The restrictions, the applicant's proposed use restrictions, enhanced landscaping and building orientation restrictions. Staff does find this approval. Planning Commission found it consistent, and the hearing officer is also recommending approval. Staff's available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Member, Jim Porter with Acreman 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa, here today representing the applicant. As Brian said, we're here today requesting a rezoning to BPO, which is a Euclidean zoning district. With that being said, we did work very closely with staff of both your staff and the Planning Commission to restrict certain uses here because the intent is to develop an office facility without any commercial. And to that end, we have voluntarily agreed to restrict any type of use other than office, and that's reflected in the staff report. We also agreed to enhance landscaping and also to orient the building away from any residential development. It's important to note that there will be no commercial allowed on this site. The Planning Commission agrees with our recommendation of limiting the number of uses. We did meet with the neighbors, and we, I think we resolved other issues, but my friend, Mr. Muffley from the Lutz Civic Association here, is here and will speak and address that. We do have recommendations of approval from your staff, from the Planning Commission staff, and a recommendation of approval from the zoning hearing master. We respectfully ask for your vote of approval today, and I'll let, I know Mr. Muffley does want to speak, and I'll let him speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. — is he speaking on behalf of the applicant?
I would never presume to speak on behalf of Mr. Muffley. He appeared at the zoning hearing master hearing with some concerns that have been addressed, so he's not part of the applicant's team. He's a party of record.
That's why I was asking, yes. We will actually address those that are proponent and opponents of this item, assuming he is a party of record. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Muffley is indeed a party of record.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on to the opportunity for proponent and opponent testimony. I'm going to open it up for proponent testimony or anyone that'd like to speak.
No one in the audience for proponent.
For proponent, okay. And do we have an opportunity for someone? We do have an opportunity for an opponent to speak. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jay Muffley, 102 Fifth Avenue, Southeast in Lutz, 33549. I am president of Lutz Civic Association. I'd like to report to the commission that due to the owner, the petitioner, and the EPC, they have supri, yeah, resolved all of our concerns, and we now support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony regarding this item?
Four, thank you.
Seeing none, I assume we do not need a rebuttal at this point. And with that, we'll hear from the Planning Commission staff. Oh, wait, just one second, please.
I just wanted to clarify one of the statements made. The application is proposed for restricted BPO, and there are certain uses restricted. However, just wanted to make clear on the record that there are other uses that are allowed besides office that have not been restricted in the BPO. So that doesn't affect our support for the application, but I wanted to make sure that that was clear for the board on the record.
Okay, and that's made reference in the agenda of corrections and additions that were referenced earlier today.
The, what was earlier today referenced was striking the prohibition on beekeeping, but there are other uses that are allowed in BPO other than office uses that are potentially considerable under this application.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. Does the applicant want to offer a rebuttal at this point before we move on to the Planning Commission staff report?
No rebuttal. I understand what Mr. Gormley said. Mr. Grady mentioned the same thing to me. The intent is to not allow any commercial on the site, and I can read the list of things we've restricted that we won't do, if that's helpful. But otherwise, we're in agreement with the staff's comments.
And so we'll move on to the Planning Commission staff?
Thank you. For the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located within the residential one future land use category. The site is located in the rural area and also within the limits of the Lutz Community Plan. The proposed development is consistent with Objective 4 of the future land use element. The intent of the rural area is to provide areas for large lot, low-density rural residential or agricultural uses. Policy 8.1 and Policy 9.1 require compatibility with the surrounding uses and consistency with the future land use category. The intent of the residential one future land use category is to designate areas for rural residential uses compatible with short-term agricultural uses and other uses, including rural-scale neighborhood, commercial, office, and multipurpose projects. The proposed office use is consistent with the intent of the residential one future land use category. Objective 16 and Policy 16.3 refer to the protection of existing neighborhoods. The subject site is surrounded by agricultural, single-family, conventional, or ASC1 zoning, and a large residential subdivision exists to the east of the subject property. As mentioned in the context, to the east and northeast is a large, single-family subdivision. To the southeast is public institutional uses. North of the property is light industrial, and south of the property is agricultural land, and to the west, northwest and southwest, more agricultural lands and single-family, the small parcel designated as multifamily. Excuse me. Initially, Planning Commission staff had concerns regarding the impact to the nearby residential developments. The applicant has proposed restrictions to help eliminate the impacts. The applicant will orient all buildings on the site away from residential uses and will also provide enhanced landscaping. No outdoor storage will be permitted on-site, and no organized activity will take place in the rear of the building. The applicant has also proposed a list of BPO uses that are considered low-impact, non-residential uses. With the proposed With the proposed restrictions, the proposed request is consistent with those policies regarding neighborhood protection. The subject site is located within the limits of the Lutz community plan, and this community desires to retain existing and encourage new commercial uses geared to serving the daily needs of area residents that are in a scale and design that complement the character of the community. The subject site does not meet traditional commercial locational criteria, and the closest node is located approximately 3,500 linear feet away at the Lutz Lake Fern and US Highway 41 intersection. Though Newberger Road is not a roadway listed on the 2040 Cost Affordable map, it is listed in the Lutz community plan where commercial development is desired. The applicant has requested a waiver to commercial locational criteria. Staff has reviewed this request and finds that it meets the intent of the Lutz community plan and therefore recommends its approval. Based upon those considerations, planning commission staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the restrictions proposed by the Development Services Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll hear from the county attorney regarding the zoning hearing master summary report.
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request for rezoning to the business professional office restricted zoning district. The property is 6.93 acres in size and is currently zoned ASC1 and designated residential one by the comprehensive plan. The property is located in the rural service area and the Lutz community plan. The zoning hearing master considered the testimony that was provided during the hearing. There were concerns regarding the existing fence on the subject property that was asserted to be a limitation on visibility at the intersection. The applicant representative testified that that fence will be taken down and replaced with appropriate fencing at site development. Other issues expressed at the hearing include concerns that the rezoning would lead to future development of commercial land uses, design of the proposed building, impacts to wetlands, impacts of the office lighting on adjacent parcels and traffic. The application does result in limitation to the specific restricted uses of BPO restricted with the limitations provided and restrictions provided by the applicant. County staff has testified that the building will ultimately be subject to the rural design standards of the Lutz community plan. Design issues, as well as the review of the site regarding wetlands, lighting impacts, and traffic, would be conducted during the site review plan—site review process—the site plan review process, excuse me—if the rezoning was to be approved. The zoning hearing master concluded that the request for the BPO R, business professional office restricted zoning district, on the subject property with the proposed restrictions will be compatible with the surrounding zoning pattern, as well as with the residential one future land use category, and the zoning hearing master therefore recommended approval.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll open it up for more discussion and consideration, and I'll recognize Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, and I want to thank the president of the Lutz Civic Association for coming down and informing us that that organization has had their concerns addressed. As I went through this case file, you know, I noted that there were some concerns raised regarding the Lutz community plan, and then I saw that the applicant's representative who spoke here today promised to get in touch with those citizens and gave them all his contact information, and so I'm glad to hear from the president of the Lutz Civic Association that that was done and that their concerns have been addressed. Otherwise, I was prepared to argue on their side today, but I will instead be on their side by approving it and just note for the record what's already been said, that the project will be required to adhere to the design standards of the Lutz community plan here. I was concerned that this is—the about the waiver from the locational criteria being—you know, I saw Steph had said, well, it's 3,500 linear feet. That is—that's over half a mile, but as long as everybody in the community is satisfied to expand their commercial node with this project restricted as it is, I'll move approval.
Very much by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Are there any other comments prior to taking a vote? Please.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim? Commissioner Kim? Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, we've set the last F item, if I'm not mistaken, and we are at the public hearing regarding the G items. And with that, I'm going to ask the staff to present the first G1A as well as G1B together?
Yes, the two can be acted on together. G1B is a change to a subdivision's agreement to recognize if G1A is approved, it would treat the improvements on either side of the bridge distinctly. And that's the purpose of G1B. It would otherwise be a consent item, but it is dependent on G1A, and that's why they're related items.
Okay, great, thank you. So—but we can vote on them together, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, excellent. Okay, so could the staff make the presentation of this item? This is a public hearing.
Thank you. The next—again, the next item is the related items, G1A and G1B. G1A is PRS application 22-01267, the Axon Lennar Homes LLC. The request is for a minor modification of the PD that's located on the west side of 78th Street, north of Maydell. The purpose of the G1A application is to provide for a temporary full access point along the southern project boundary in the area I just pointed to. Currently, the PD does not provide for access along to that local road to the south of the project. The purpose of the temporary access that will be then converted to emergency access with pedestrian access to the local road is that the access to this portion of the project has to traverse a canal. There's been delays in the—in constructing of the bridge that has to go over the canal because of getting the part—the needed materials for the bridge. Therefore, the conditions are established where within six months after the issuance of the first CO for a residential home within that portion of the subdivision, within six months of that, the bridge would have to be constructed. And as Adam mentioned, G1B is a related agreement—subdivisor's agreement that would otherwise be on consent that addresses the agreements in dealing with both the bridge crossing and the temporary access. Staff is recommending approval and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As I mentioned earlier, this is a public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak to this matter, please approach the podium and introduce I'm not seeing or hearing anyone at the moment.
Yes, Woods 1201. So good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is a copy of the site plan that—I'm sorry—for the record, Michael Brooks, 400 North Tampa Street, Suite 1910, Tampa 33602. On the—on the screen is a copy of the PD site plan that Mr. Grady was just showing. We've—I've highlighted in yellow there what is known as Phase 6 of the Touchstone subdivision that is nearly substantial and completed at this time, except for Phase 6. What we call Phase 6 has been plotted. Again, the area on the yellow. The overall subdivision, and you may see references to Tower Dairy in the backup, was roughly 1,000 acres. This is the remaining phase of the project. There are several townhome sites that are under construction. The request is really several-fold related to the access point. This project was originally approved in 2005 before many of the current access management regulations came into effect. In fact, this project would be grandfathered from specifically the emergency access provisions. This request is to add the emergency access to 49th in the location that is shown, to add a requirement for the developer to construct a sidewalk on the north side of 49th Street to make pedestrian connections between the internal sidewalks of the subdivision. And lastly, as Mr. Grady referenced, due to supply chain challenges, the steel—the fabricated steel for the bridge was delayed. That is now on site. That is under construction, and I'm going to put one more slide on, not to belabor this Current pictures of the bridge that will span the canal to the north and connect Touchstone to Phase 6 with the other phases of the Touchstone subdivision. The request is to be able to allow the emergency access connection for permanent access or for non-restricted access for a period of six months while the bridge is completed, at which time the access connection to 49th would be gated. There would be a knockbox and other things you would typically expect to see in an emergency access connection. And with that, I have with us Todd Amidin, the project engineer, and Steve Hendry, the project traffic consultants, and Dan for any questions, but that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much.
I think I may have left out that I'm here on behalf of Lennar Homes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. Are there anyone—is there anyone else there to—that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing or hearing none, I will open it up for a combined motion and a vote on this item. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim? Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We are at the item—at commissioner items, of which we have none today, but we do have staff items under the I section of our agenda regarding the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment Procedures Manual revisions, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, excellent.
And we'll have a representative of the planning commission staff make a presentation on this. This is a—this is the board's Procedures manual, and it's adopted by ordinance, and I believe it'll run through some changes that the board has requested.
Excellent, very much. And there will be an opportunity for public comment in the event that there's anyone that wishes to speak to this item. Planning Commission?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Unica Mills Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present the Hillsborough County Plan Amendment Procedures Manual update. As you all may know, the Procedures manual is the document that guides the process of plan amendments for unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Procedures manual has not been revised for some time now. The current version that is in use today hasn't been revised since 2016. So in 2020, planning commission staff started a total revamp of the Procedures manual for unincorporated Hillsborough County. In your backup is a strike-through, underlined version of the current Procedures manual, the newly-formatted version, and an overview of the substantive changes. The revised Procedures manual was vetted by both county legal as well as planning commission One of the more substantive changes within the Procedures manual, which was initiated by the Board of County Commissioners, is that privately-initiated text amendments can only be proposed twice a year. That would be during the January 1st cycle of plan amendments and during the July 1st cycle of plan amendments. Additionally, those privately-initiated text amendments will have to now go before the Board of County Commissioners to determine if a proposed privately-initiated text amendment can proceed or not through the plan amendment process. This process that privately-initiated text amendments will now have to go through is very much like the process for privately-initiated land development code amendments. All of the references to the jurisdictions of Tampa, Temple Terrace, as well as Plant City were removed. Hillsborough County will now have its own standalone manual. And due to the recently-approved House Bill 487, small-scale plan amendment sizes increased from an acreage of 10 acres to 50 acres. Another major change with the proposed Procedures manual is an applicant will now be required to hold a neighborhood meeting to inform citizens of their plan amendment proposal if the applicant does not initiate a neighborhood meeting before a request for one is made. The notification distance was also increased from—currently, it's at 250 feet, and it was increased to 500 feet. Plan amendments that are denied by the Board of County Commission will now be permitted—well, excuse me—will not be permitted to resubmit for 12 months from the date of denial. The 12-month waiting period does not apply to amendments that have been modified from the previous submittal. The planning commission at their September 12 regular meeting approved the updates to the Hillsborough County Procedures manual and recommends that the Hillsborough County Procedures manual be found consistent. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can open it up to public comment if there is anyone present that wishes to speak, or those that may be online that had signed up to speak, given that I have none at this point.
And there are none present in Saunders.
Okay, and there's no one present in Saunders to speak to this item, so we can open it up for board discussion and consider a motion to approve the resolution adopting the revised Comprehensive Plan Procedures manual. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I am thrilled with this change. Text amendments apply to the whole county. So when there's a privately-initiated text amendment, they're talking about something that applies to the whole county, not just their property, and it is really important that before we send out—as has happened once in a while—the staff and citizens and get everybody going through all the time and effort of considering this, that we first bring it to the board and see, does this have any legs? Is this going to go anywhere? Or do we have any comment about how it should be massaged before it does go anywhere? So I think it just makes all kinds of sense, along with the increased distance for noticing and everything else in here, so I'll move approval.
You have a motion by approval by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Cohen and Myers. Any further comment? Seeing none, please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim? Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. We have two other items before I call the meeting adjourned. We have an opportunity for county attorney items, as well as any off-the-agenda items.
Board members, I wanted to address one off-the-agenda item. It has to do with the land development code—upcoming land development code public hearings. We had—the first public hearing was scheduled for September and had to be canceled due to Hurricane Ian. We have now used the second public hearing, which is October 20th, scheduled to be the first public hearing, and there are two other opportunities for existing scheduled dates to consider for rescheduling the second public hearing, the first of which is December 15th, and that is currently on the calendar for consideration of comprehensive plan amendments, and there will be amendments for the board to consider that night, as well as a companion rezoning item. That is the—that is our public hearing that's on the calendar that's scheduled already. The other potential option would be to hold it in conjunction with the November 3rd BOCC land use meeting. I'll just say that that would be a daytime hearing. That's—it's a—that's a different type of—different time than you typically have those public hearings, but wanted to offer those as both established dates that are available. And if it be the board's consensus, we would schedule one of those to—if it were not one of those— If it were not one of those two dates, we would need to check calendars to see about getting another date on the calendar. But again, December 15th will be a hearing date that the board will be here already.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll just state for the record that Mr. Gormly did consult with me. If you choose the December 15th option for the second reading, that'll mean that I'll be here for the first reading and my replacement will be here for the second reading. I'm perfectly comfortable with that, so should you choose December 15th to keep with an evening schedule, I'm fine, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Cohen?
I do think it's preferable to hear those in the evening. That is our custom, and I would probably favor that, but whatever everyone else wants to do is fine.
Commissioner Myers?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
No?
I'm, I'm.
Okay. You made mention of rezoning, and that's the one I'm a little concerned about as far as timeline is concerned. Do you know which item that was? Is it only one?
Right now, there's only one. It was a companion rezoning with a comprehensive plan amendment. This is one that the board has heard once already. It is at State Road 60 and Miller Road. The board had a hearing on that, heard some concerns or had some testimony about dynamics of access on the Miller Road. Board remanded that back to the zoning hearing master to consider making restricted access onto Miller Road, and so that's the rezoning that will come back with the companion comprehensive plan amendment to be heard together on December 15th.
Okay. What is the board's pleasure?
Yes. Since we already have that, and since we have Commissioner White's assurance that he thinks it's fine with him, I'll move that.
Okay. I'm going to ask, there was one item that we had either moved or continued that had something to...
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
We can, it can motion or it can take this consensus.
Consensus, either way, okay. There was one item that had some sensitivity to the interest rates and other issues that we had previously, but that's not on this agenda, correct?
It is not, correct.
Okay, great. I just needed a clarification on that, and that was my only concern. So if there's a consensus to reschedule the comprehensive plan to December 15th, I'm in agreement as well.
Land development code will pair with the comprehensive plan December 15th, yes.
Yeah, I like having them together, too, so that sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And with that, that was the only off-the-agenda item. I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.